We're good? We're good. Okay.
Bye.
Wait.
Somebody's that one.
All right. Oh. We'll just talk really loud. Okay. Um, all right, we'll give it a try. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, be advised that a notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board at Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place at the Town Hall at seven P M. on February third, twenty twenty-five. Shandru Parthani?
Here.
Let's turn off all of our lights. Zhou Jingpeng?
Here.
Gary Rosen?
Here.
Regina Truitt?
Here.
Beth Saul?
Here.
David Bradford?
Here.
Jessica Caulfield?
Right.
Jessica Blatche?
Here.
Oh, okay. I would have to show this is Noino Roberts.
Roberts.
We'll need to take the other hall first.
Nino, raise your right hand. Get right in. I'll repeat after me. I state your name.
State your name.
Now, I state your name.
I, Noino Roberts.
You solemnly swear or affirm?
Solemnly swear affirm.
That I support the Constitution of the United States?
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I bear true faith and allegiance to the Saint?
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Saint?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And the governments established in the United States?
And in this day?
And in this day?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm?
I do further solemnly swear affirm.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly?
I will faithfully, impartially, and justly?
Perform all the duties of the office of zoning board alternate number one?
Perform all the duties of the zoning board alternate number one?
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So, Nino.
So, Nino, we got?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well done. We also got to read it.
Okay. Um, so we are going to start with the interval of minutes from January? There, I did not circulate. Oh, yeah. There, no, there's not. Okay. Um, well, then, I'm going to, we're going to get to the new business, but I just want to announce to everyone, we're going to do a slight change in the order from what's on the agenda. Um, we're going to start with calendar four zero zero three dash twenty-four. That's three four winding way. After that, we're going to move on to calendar four zero two one, that's twenty-four, that's thirty-five A Spring Street. And then the last application that will be appearing tonight is calendar thirty-nine ninety-one dash twenty-four, that's three hundred fifty-six. Okay, so we're going to start first with, um, calendar thirty-nine fifty dash twenty-three. Um, this is Ashatak Sharma from twenty-nine winding way, and the applicant is requesting a one-year extension for previously issued variance. Hi, can we please, Mr. Sharman? Yes.
Yeah, so, um.
Okay. Free, your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to given tonight's proceeding due to truth, policy, thought, or the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Ashatok Sharma.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Sharman, you have submitted a request to the board, formal request, to extend the variance approval for twenty-nine winding way, uh, which was approved by the Board of Adjustment on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and was formally memorialized on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Um, and if you would just explain to the board the reason for the extension request?
So, been working, uh, with the contractor for, you know, trying to get the plans finalized, and you two actually had extensive, uh, work-related travel over the last year, and because of which there had been some difficulty in getting the permits and all those things filed. So, I'm hopeful this year that I will be able to get all those things done, submitted, and be able to start the construction.
And for how long have you requested?
Uh, one year, hopeful, and, but I'm hopeful that I should be able to get that, have mixed in my next six months as well.
Next six months or so.
Can you, can you tell us regarding the board number yet? Why, um?
Sure, sure. So, the application, um, involve renovation expansion of a C F dwelling on twenty-nine winding way, there was numerous requests for variance relief, um, excuse me, granted relief for building coverage, granted relief for front yard setback, granted relief for floor area renovation. And it's up to the board as to whether they, of course, A, want to grant or deny the request, and if you're inclined to grant the request, the ask is for one year, but certainly this board has granted, um, extensions for less time than that, depending on circumstances. So, that's up to the board.
Thank you. Um, I, I would just start by saying that I would be comfortable approving this request, but I would be more comfortable approving it for, um, six months, just due to the fact that there is an F A R involved. So, if anyone wants to weigh in?
You know, I think that makes sense. I guess the question I would have for the applicant is, is, I mean, you had a year, I know, obviously, you have some difficulties in being able to, um, finish the plan, but do you really need a longer year? You know, can you do it in six months?
Well, I'm hopeful that I could do it in six months, but the year was just in case if some other situation arrives, to have that option.
But we said you had to do it in six months, would you not? Do you think you would not be able to do it? To get us?
I mean, we are already in February, so six months means like I would have to get started, I guess, by end of August or so. I could try again. If the board really strongly feels, if the board strongly feels, I mean, I would try and, and I guess if it.
Would we, would he have to be finished in six months, or just start?
Just set the whole permits.
Whole permits?
Let's get started with the construction.
So, just to get started?
And when we just remind the board, we typically, um, grant these requests for a period of time that's less than one year, it's basically to make, to sort of keep you out on a shorter leash, just to, after six months, they're not ready to start, you have them come back and explain why, you know, you're still not ready to start construction, because now it's a year and a half after the year. I assume work has been done.
Yeah, yeah. You're working with the.
You've got yourself it's happening.
Yeah.
I would be supportive of six months. If you need more, then you can come back. Okay.
Just a quick question, another quick point of clarification. Have any of these variances changed, in regards to ordinances in the townships? The township change any of these ordinances since that's been, since the renovations?
I don't believe so. I wouldn't, you know?
The only thing that may have changed is the front yard setback. I, I don't know that he would have, that he would require a setback at this point. But everything else we know is the same, as far as the percentages.
He would be requiring additional.
Okay. Yeah.
Just to be clear, you're still working with the architects on finalizing the build, the construction draft?
Yes. So, I do hear your points about, uh, you know, six months. I could be good, you know, I could go either six months or twelve months. I think if it gives more comfort, I'd be with that, but I haven't gave what the board expects, but, you know.
As long as there's a building to come back and try to check where it's, I would say.
Does someone want to make a motion? Make a motion to extend?
I second.
Oh, wait. Three-nine-five-oh dash twenty-three? For?
For.
How long?
I'm at four.
Six months, I'm so sorry.
I second.
Shandru Parthani?
Yes.
Zhou Jingpeng?
Yes.
Gary Rosen?
Yes.
Regina Truitt?
Yes.
Beth Saul?
Yes.
Jessica Caulfield?
Yes.
Jessica Blatche?
Yes. Okay, so six months extended.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have thirty-four winding way for Chris Singh. Shandru said he has as well? I don't know.
Yes, he told me he does.
Okay. So, we'll make. I'll have to get a sign of certification, which I don't have with me, but I will get the. Do we need to put that on the record right now? I guess we could just indicate that Shandru, Zhou, and Zhou Jing have listened to the respective tapes, and are eligible to certify. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the zoning board. My name is Ruchy Hari. I'm here as a licensed architect representing my client, Mr. Singh, Mr. Chris Singh. I have a bachelor's degree in architecture, and I'm certified, and I hold an active license in the state of New York, New Jersey, and Maryland. I've testified before many boards in New Jersey. My professional address is eighty-one Falcon Road, Livingston, New Jersey.
Thank you. You, you were already qualified, right?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, should I describe the project right from the beginning, or go straight away where we start last? Whatever you.
But why don't you, uh, because it's been a while, why don't you remind the board of what happened to the house?
Okay, thank you.
And a little bit about the app?
Sure. So, the subject property is thirty-four winding way, Melbourne. The property is located in our sixth zone. Lot is eleven, block is one-seven-one-two. It's, this application is about a colonial-style, single-family detached home. It's two-storied with unfinished basement, five bedrooms, three bathrooms, and doesn't have a car garage right now. So, we have been before the board before, in, uh, twenty twenty-four December, and there we were proposing initially a two-storied addition. We had the one-car garage on the ground floor, and then on the second floor, we had a recreational room. And, um, our ask was about the setbacks, the F A R. We heard the board's concern, there were a couple of concern in terms of the massing, the square footage of the project additions, and we are now, we've come back with the revised drawings. The drawings now show one-car garage that's proposed, which is attached to the existing home. It's a two-eighty-six square feet of addition. Overall height is about fifteen feet.
I'm sorry, before you said the height, you mentioned the square footage?
Yes. Two-eight-six. The proposed exterior finishes would be vinyl and radboard siding with asphalt shingle roof. Um, I can review all the variances that are in the application with the proposed additions.
Did you eliminate any of the variances?
Yes, we did.
Why don't you start with the variances that were eliminated as a result of the revision to the application?
Sure. So, earlier, our car, our addition was more than eighteen feet, that kicked in a couple of side setback, uh, variance. Uh, we got rid of the second floor, so now it's just one story. The overall height is fifteen feet, so we could get rid of one of the side setbacks that was for more than eighteen feet. So, uh, we comply with the side yard setback. I first wanted to mention that with this addition, the side setback is eight feet, and that's the minimum required on the side where the proposed addition is coming. The each side setback for the building more than eighteen feet is reflected on the left side of the house and the right side. The left side is the one where the proposed addition is coming. We are compliant with the side setback, which is eight feet. The right side is the one which is a pre-existing, non-conforming condition, and it's about seven feet three-five-eight. Again, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming condition. We are not doing any addition on that side. The side where we are doing the addition is eight feet. Uh, it is compliant. The other variance, uh, is about the combined side yard setback, which must be thirty-five percent of the lot, overall twenty-six point six feet minimum. Uh, with the setbacks that we have, we are coming up to about twenty point one percent, which is less than thirty-five percent, so asking for a variance on the combined side yard setback. We comply with the height, we comply with the rear setback. Uh, the building coverage is also compliant, also complies. Ours is twenty point five, the required is, minimum is twenty, uh, maximum is twenty-three percent of the site area. Um, the maximum lot coverage, uh, is forty-five percent of the site area, and we comply with it. Ours is twenty-three, twenty-nine point three percent, which is less than forty-five percent of the site area. The last variance, which I want to talk about, is the F A R variance, and with the addition, which is about two-hundred and, um.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six, thank you, square feet. Uh, we trigger that F A R variance. It basically comes out to be two point two percent of the variance request, and the minimum allowed is thirty-six percent, so it comes out to be, uh, thirty-eight point two proposed overall.
So, you know, the maximums?
Maximum, maximum, yes.
And proposed is what? Is currently?
Thirty-eight point two percent overall.
So, just, just to remind the board, so last time you were here, I think what you were proposing was forty-one point three percent, and you have reduced it to thirty-one point two.
Yes.
So, in terms of square footage, how much of that two point two percent excess come up?
So, it's two forty-nine square feet more than what's allowed.
So, just if I could ask another clarifying question. So, the documents we have, um, that are actually on the website, are they correct or are they old?
They, I sent it this morning, so they should be.
That's what you put up? Okay. This, this, this one?
Uh, no, these are the old forms, the document that, yes.
So, the, the plans that you're relying on now, what's the validity of those plans?
Um, it's one-twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, and everything is bubbled, and, uh, there's a delta one next to it, which shows all the changes.
If I got that right, there are two ways. One is the combined side yard setback?
Correct.
Uh, which is, I guess you need to be at thirty-five percent, but you are at twenty point one percent?
Twenty point one percent, correct.
And this F A R, which is beyond like two point two percent, who are required thirty-six percent, and that turns out to be two forty-nine square feet.
Two forty-nine square feet. And, uh, the, the third one is, which actually is a non-conforming condition, it's not something that's triggered because of our addition, is the side yard setback. Uh, I'm not sure whether this would get counted as a variance now, because we are not doing anything on that side, so it's a grandfather situation.
You're talking about the, uh?
Side setback.
Seventeen feet on the right side?
Yeah, seventeen three-five-eight, yeah.
But that's not counted as a variance that you're requesting, because it's a?
Exactly.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing, one of the.
So, just to get this, the, um, combined setback and the F A R?
F A R, yes.
Oh, so we're not asking for four variances now? So, this is just two? It's hard, so this, I just want to make sure, because what's online has four? And our agenda has four?
The F A R is also much higher than what they're asking for on that issue.
Yeah.
Those were the forms that were submitted.
So, I don't know if you have access to that. Do you, do you guys have that in the sheet? With the observations?
Yeah.
Oh, you mean this? Yeah. But not on the. Thank you. But, thank you. Um, anything else?
Um, I just want to talk about the two key factors, uh, that for which we are asking the variance, what is the irregular shape of the lot? It has a unique topography of the site, where one third of the site is, has a huge slope at the back, and that is something with, along with a fifteen-feet easement at the back, and, uh, these situations, they create a unique situation for us not to locate, uh, a detached car garage in the rear of the property, which could have been one of the cases for its location, uh, and that kind of, the steep slope prevents us from, it's kind of creates a design challenge for us in terms of locating the garage. Uh, second is a lack of car garage, and all the homes in the neighborhood, they either have one-car garage or a two-car garage, and when my client bought the property, he did not have any, uh, car garage. Currently, he parks his car on the asphalt driveway. He has two kids, it would be good and helpful for him if he gets one-car garage, so that he can access his home inside from the car garage, and it will make his life much easier. Um, I also want to point out about the, um, from the aesthetic standpoint, this, it's a very moderate position, it's, uh, it's going to merge with the aesthetics of the neighborhood, the style of the home relates with the neighborhood, and, uh, even the character of the house merges well with what's existing on the street, and, uh, adding one-car garage will be quite a helpful, uh, situation for my client, and plus would increase the aesthetics and overall, uh, look of the street. Um, I want to go over the negative criteria. I don't see any substantial traffic increase due to this addition. It's not hurting the property value of the neighborhood, and, uh, in fact, this addition would improve the value of the property. Uh, it would increase the aesthetics of the house and fit well with the neighborhood design style. Uh, it doesn't create a substantial detriment to the public. This addition would not create any further drainage issues, because it's the, uh, the rainwater lines would be connected to the existing, uh, stone lines, hence no substantial in, in, uh, impact and not a detriment. So, in conclusion, I respectfully ask the board for the approval of the variance, as it would allow the homeowner to at least have one-car garage, and in turn also maintain the visual balance of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks. I just had a clarifying question. This house used to have a garage, didn't it? Is this the one that I'm, am I recalling correctly?
Yeah.
It used to have a garage, but it was, but did this homeowner make that change? That they built?
So, it was long back before he even bought the property. When he had the property, when he bought the property, it, there was no car garage. I, I think what might have happened is that the earlier homeowner would have done work without permits, taken over that space. That's our assumption. So, when he bought it, it was, I think, uh, two thousand, twenty twenty, when he bought the property, at that time, there was no car garage, so.
But there used to be one, it was, the house was built with one, and then the previous homeowner?
It used to be a side access.
Into the house. Humor me here, because you're asking for F A R. What would happen if you restored that garage to where it was?
It's, the access, first of all, is from the site. It's a side yard access to the, uh, to that future room. It's a recreational room, which well now integrates well with the whole design of the house, so it's, it's now very difficult to kind of, uh, remove it and bring it back to a garage now.
Right, but I guess in the, but I guess that's living space in the basement. It's just that it's, it's. It is in the basement. The garage was in the base, well, was on the left side. I think it's a kitchen. So, the previous garage?
It was next to the.
Oh, was she's a left side?
On the left side. It was left on grade, I don't think it was on the basement. It's where the, one of the family room is now.
You can flip your page to A one point oh.
Yeah, so that was the, that was the car garage previously, the family room.
And the driveway is where the car is on that?
Yeah, that's the asphalt driveway where the lots are currently now.
In that, in that particular picture, here, here's a car right there, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And just to be clear, you took off the second story?
Yes.
Right? So, this is purely being used as a garage?
Correct. Just bare minimum, what he can, and especially, we reduced the size of the one-car garage. We bought it to twenty-two feet, thirteen, twenty-two by thirteen feet, which is just bare minimum, just so that he can have a case one-car garage.
And they're not, we're not allowed to park on the street overnight, is that correct?
I, I think so. Uh, again, that's something I would like to check with him, but he currently parks on the driveway of the property, yes.
Um, how is this property compared to the others in the neighborhood in terms of, is it an oversized lot or an undersized lot or just one?
So, the lot is, uh, the standard lot size is six thousand square feet. Uh, ours is eleven thousand, but we have a unique situation where at least one third of the lot is, has a steep slope, something that cannot be used at all. In fact, he will be putting a fence in the back for the safety of his kids, because that's something that's like a fifteen twenty feet deep slope with the east wing, so, um, I don't know if I answered your question.
No, you didn't, thanks. Yes.
You mentioned the lot, the garage is twenty-two by thirteen. How high is it?
Fifteen feet is the maximum height, and we were very aware of that, because if it goes beyond eighteen feet, it triggers the side yard setback, which we wanted to avoid. So, bare minimum, whatever we can do to just have, um, in terms of the square footage, in terms of the height, so we don't, we're respecting all the variances, and you don't figure any additional variances in our application.
Any other questions from the board? Does anyone in the audience who has any questions? Do we have?
I have a question. Is there any proposed, um, drainage, like, uh, how the water will just run off the?
So, uh, yeah, I mentioned, uh, the roof drains would be connected underground to the existing system sewer.
Um, any questions from the audience? Any comments from the audience? Okay, that goes to public portion. Um, board members, what do you think?
Mr. Line the board, this is necessarily our variance, and as a result of that, requires five hundred and thirty votes from the board.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a little bit torn about it. I, I, I do appreciate that, I think you'd scale back the projects, and they, uh, sign the garage somewhere, and, uh, I think a little too much mass on it. It is a large-ish house for that space of the neighbors, um, so I'm not worried about additional floor area to add into the whole. I do think, uh, having a garage is not a reasonable ask, but I, I think I would not be supporting that this homeowner had eliminated the garage. A ton ago, and then, you know, that's a fact, after having taken advantage of the additional space of the home. That's not the case, so I think, you know, I think you've, um, uh, scaled back the projects sufficiently to, you know, at least be kind of the minimum of what you need. Um, so, I mean, I, I think I would be supporting, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the massing, but I, I think I would support it.
Well, obviously, this is quite a moderate ask after a couple round of mitigation, and it's basically meeting your, your needs that you don't have right now, so I would be supportive.
Likewise, I think, I don't think, based on the testimony I heard, uh, I don't think the current owner should be penalized for something that was taken away, a garage taken away by the prior owner, uh, and given that it is, I, I, it's not a nice to have, I think the garage is a necessity. I, I think I, I could be supportive as well, and given that there is also steep slope at the back, which has been thoughtfully considered and decided against, that we cannot use that area, uh, adding this, while it does increase massing, it's significantly less than what was originally proposed with two, two, uh, levels. So, with this one level garage, I, I could be supportive of the application.
I'll follow up on that. I, I, I could be supportive of this as well. As far as you being able to scale it back from what it was initially, with the second story on it, that was, that went a long way. Um, I, again, the reason I mentioned that the parking overnight, you can't park your car anywhere in town overnight, so it's almost requiring that you have some off-site parking or street parking, and the garage would make a big difference here. Um, but I, like Shandru said as well, the, the lot is, I mean, it drops way off at the back to the mausoleum, St. Stephen's Cemetery there. So it's it's there's a lot of it that's not really usable. So I could be supportive of this with the side yard, combined side yard variance as well.
I'll go I'll go next. I'm a little bit concerned about how close you are to the neighbors with this, but I don't see any neighbors here complaining quite frankly, so I'm guessing that they're they're okay with this. And you have scaled back a lot, which we which I appreciate. My only concern would be lighting, but it does look like you're lighting on that the neighbor's side, correct?
No, we didn't. So it's only on the front where the door is.
Right, and it presumably wouldn't have a light shining in the neighborhood.
Right.
So it's it's a garage, so. So I don't love it, but I will be supportive of it because I feel like it's it's a hardship that he doesn't even with a house that doesn't have a garage. And there's really no other place to reasonably put it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with all my fellow board members. There's a clear hardship here with the property. Anyone who's been that there, it is a steep drop off, completely unusable land. So I do think that it's deceiving to, you know, that that it is an oversized lot, but it's an oversized lot where really a lot of it is not usable. I I likewise don't think it's fair to penalize an applicant, you know, for for something that they, you know, a problem that they didn't cause. So I think it's unreasonable to expect that someone is gonna go tear apart, you know, a chunk of their house to, you know, with women and they decide to, you know, take away the garage in the first place. I'm happy to see that the applicant has scaled back the garage and turned it into purely a garage and then the minimum amount that you need to park a car in. And we have ordinances in this town that you need a garage, you know, they're not allowed to put a house without a garage. I mean, it's getting to these circumstances. So I think that that's, you know, helping the 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 master of plan of the town as well that, you know, giving back the garage. So I would be in favor of this too. Would anyone like to make a motion? I mean, we should probably, we're gonna, I guess, divide it into two, we'll do whether they are.
I don't know if you do based on the comments.
Okay. Eric, then we can make one motion and two. Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve of calendar four zero zero three dash twenty four.
I'll second. Shadrew Hordani?
Yes.
Georgeang Peng?
Yes.
Gary Rosen?
Yes.
Virginia Truitt?
Yes.
Joseph Poffey?
Yes.
Jessica Gluck?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Okay, next up we have calendar four zero two one dash twenty four, thirty-five A Spring Street on the applicant's power ring.
Richard Skolik from my own law firm on behalf of the applicants, Hal Wang and Chief Gao. As you mentioned, Chairwoman, thirty-five A Spring Street, it's block nine oh one, lot twenty-one, qualifier C zero zero. Hey, it's one half of a two-family home. Unfortunately, there is no garage here. Thus, there's no place for bicycles, lawn equipment, the old coffee maker, boxes, sports equipment, that sort of thing. So we're asking for a shed, permission for a shed. It's two hundred square feet in total. That's the sum total of this application. The dimensions are twelve point five by sixteen. We are over on lot coverage and building coverage. So that two hundred square feet is an increase of two point five percent on building coverage and lot coverage. I have Mike Roth, he's both an engineer and a planner, to go through the plan and offer some rationale based upon both the C one and the C two criteria for the new board member. We're gonna be talking about the criteria, C dash one and C dash two. Those are the buckets, if you will, that the legislature has told us, the proofs that we could come in or the reasons. So we're gonna have just a little bit of testimony on both of those two types of buckets of criteria. So with that, if I could qualify Mr. Roth.
Do you swear from testimony about the given this proceeding be the truth, all truth found by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Sure. Michael Roth, last name spelled R O T H, I'm a law engineer.
And Mike, can you provide your qualifications as both a civil engineer and a planner?
Sure. I'm the owner of my company. I've designed and managed several projects throughout the state, just like the one I'll be talking about tonight that's on the board there. I graduated with a bachelor's degree of science from N J I T. I've also licensed P E and P P in the state. My both licenses are in good standing. I've been before several land use boards previously. However, this is my first appearance before this board. I look forward to presenting this project tonight.
And you've been qualified by these other boards, I know, as a civil engineer and also as a planner on some applications that we've worked on together over the years.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, Chairwoman, I would submit Mr. Roth as an expert in planning and engineering. Okay, Mike, you wanna just call out the sheet number? Why don't you go on that side? I think that's gonna be a little easier.
So I'm referencing the zoning plan. Just gonna, I don't want to be too too loud in here with the mic. So I'm referencing the the zoning plan dated November eighth, two thousand twenty-four. This plan was submitted to the board, therefore I won't mark it. It's part of the application package. What you see here is is two views. We're gonna start with the left view, which is what the property is today, existing conditions. So the subject property is lot twenty-one of block nine oh one, located at thirty-five Spring Street. The area of the lot is seven thousand nine hundred ninety-one square feet and consists of a two-family dwelling that's labeled as thirty-five A for the west unit on the left side and thirty-five B for the east unit on the right side, located in the R seven zone district. This project is for thirty-five A Spring Street, which is the left side unit. The existing dwelling is set back eleven point nine feet from the front property line, eight feet from the east side lot line, seven point three feet from the west side lot line and eighty-one point two feet from the rear lot line. Access to thirty-five A Spring Street is by the existing driveway that runs along the left side property line and connects to a rear parking area behind the building. As mentioned, there's no garage on the property today. There's no other structures besides the existing dwelling for thirty-five A. The sides and rear of the property are bounded by white board-on-board fencing to that provide privacy to the neighboring properties. And the existing building coverage is twenty-five point seven percent, which is a pre-existing I can form condition as the maximum is twenty-five percent. And the block coverage is fifty-eight point eight percent, which is also a pre-existing condition as the maximum is forty-five percent. So that's the current conditions on the property, the existing conditions. We're now flip to the opposed conditions, which is the right view. The project is proposing a shed which is shaded at the rear of the property. The proposed shed is twelve and a half feet by sixteen feet with an area of two hundred square feet. The shed is proposed nine feet from the left side property line and four and a half feet from the rear property line, which complies with a minimum four-foot requirement. The shed is the only proposed change to the project. No modifications are being proposed to the dwelling or other site features. Therefore, the project results a just a very minor two point five percent increase to the pre-existing I can forming building coverage and lot coverage. So therefore, prints are building coverage up to twenty-eight point two percent and the lot coverage up to sixty-one point three percent. And variances are requested for for each of those items, which are only two variances that we're asking for.
And Mike, in my opening statement, I said we would offer some rationale under the C two criteria. That's where there's benefits to the public. Can you talk here about how the application has benefits to the public and the furtherance of those goals that are set forth in the municipal land use law?
Sure. So satisfy the C two criteria. The development proposal promotes purposes of the M L U L, which include purpose G to provide sufficient space for this use as the proposed shed complies with the setback requirements and purpose I for promote a desirable visual. As the proposed shed will, the color of the shed is proposed to be white that matches the color tone of the property and is also consistent with the dwelling and fencing on the property.
Okay, would you offer an opinion as to whether at least some storage is generally appropriate for a single-family unit or duplex-type unit here?
Yes, and particularly for this this lot, there's no opportunity for storage on the property today. We feel that a detached shed is best suited for for this type of use to provide storage for this homeowner.
And that would serve that goal of zoning, which says there should be appropriate densities and appropriate uses for a variety of different types.
That's correct.
Okay. Can we add some landscaping here also to have at least a little additional public benefit? We talked about that.
Yes, yeah, so there's there's current landscaping in the back part of the property today. There's trees on pretty much all four corners. We're gonna propose two two more shrubs to further, you know, benefit the the backyard and and area and mitigate that increase in building and appropriate coverage.
We also talked about the C one criteria.
Right.
The chairwoman referred to that by a common name called hardship. It really refers to physical characteristics of the property. Is there some rationale under that also, would you say, with your planners hat on?
Yes, absolutely. The hardship component, the status of the C one criteria is the location of the existing dwelling and driveways falls on the property where there's really no room to add any attached garage or feature for storage as it would impact the rear parking area, which also serves as a turnaround area. Therefore, we feel that there's a C one part of the project component to it.
And the balance of the C one is you're not supposed to propose anything that's so oversized, that sort of out of character. Would you say that this proposed shed is reasonable in size? Certainly given the one right on the other parcel there and in the neighborhood.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, especially for these types of lots that are somewhat narrow but deep, it's it's very common to have some sort of detached garage or structure shed that's separate into the rear dwelling.
And we're actually smaller than the one on the other unit that's on the same, it's not the same tax parcel, but also thirty-five Spring.
Correct, that's correct.
Where A, they're big, they have some sort of existing garage there, which appears to be a little bit larger.
That's correct.
Anything else, Mike, and the negative criteria here, you see any?
No, I feel that the project results no substantial detriment to the public good. Again, we need the setback requirements for the shed. It's just two minor variances for that slight increase in in coverage for for building coverage and also for lot coverage.
Chairwoman, that's the basics here, fairly simple application. Submit it's a reasonably sized shed, a reasonable compromise on on what is a tight situation.
Is it a prefab shed? Or do you have a picture of what it's gonna look like?
How? You gotta get someone in here, stand up and.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, wait.
Hold on, you gotta.
You're right.
Right here, yeah.
Do you swear from testimony about the given this proceeding be the truth, all truth found by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Why don't you come over here closer to the center?
How have you picked picked out the architectural?
So the plan is to duplicate what my neighbor has, just to make things consistent and make it like a whole one property. So it's most likely it's not gonna be a prefab.
So it's gonna look like the one.
On the on the unit B, yes.
But it's smaller.
Smaller.
Okay.
Is it materially smaller? It says three hundred nineteen square feet for thirty-five B. Is that an accurate number?
Mike, do you have the numbers?
So that means fifty percent, this will be fifty percent smaller.
Right, yeah, the proposed shed on thirty-five A is is two hundred square feet.
But the one, but this says the one on B is three hundred nineteen.
That's correct.
So this one's materially smaller than the ones.
Correct, the one.
And how tall is it?
Alex, same height. I think measure is like fifteen feet.
So it's a fifteen-foot tall shed.
I'm I'm curious. I know it's not your property, but you're saying that you're trying to, you know, make it consistent with thirty-five B. Did you, are you, did they come before the zoning board to get a?
I spoke with my unit B owner. That's where we agreed. He didn't come to the board.
I, we did a little research. It's it's very tough to do research here on what's happened because of the way the ordinances are cataloged. You have to know the year, which is impossible. I think it was an old horse shed of something of of that nature that has been there for a very long time. My opinion for what it's worth. But you can't just give the address of the block and lot and try to get a resolution, unfortunately. Oh, come on, Ms. Dabbett. We've done it. You get a thing back. Tell us what year. I'm like, well, I don't know what year. This was.
I did a back, I did a search through the S T L portal. I did not see any permits for anything to be built. So I don't know if that just was has been here for quite a while. Unfortunately, he took a. Yeah, I don't know.
Did I did I serve you up? Was that fair, Ms. Dabbett? Did I?
Well, I'm gonna deflect here.
Okay.
Ms. Dabbett, so this is a condominium, right, this property?
There's a condominium, but there is a separate deed for each parcel.
Well, that's okay, but the question is, if it is a condominium, is this intended to be a limited common element of the condominium?
No, it's not gonna be a common element. I don't believe so.
Well, if it's. If it's condominium, there's general common element and limited common element. So I just want to know, the resolution, what is it?
I'll have to let you know, but there's a, there is a condo association that has certain responsibilities. But in researching the project, there was a deed just for thirty-five A to my client and his wife. So they don't own shares of a condominium association in that regard. I don't think it should make a difference for land use purposes, but I didn't set it up. So I'm not I'm not sure it's it's relevant, but I can let you know. I think they're gonna be responsible for it because you're not responsible for the other.
Yeah, the condominium covers the like common items, but we each cover our own site.
What is in the lot eight to nine on the property?
I believe those are single-family dwellings that have frontage on, I'm not sure where the street further north is to it, but they they're essentially back-to-back lots.
Do you know how far that those homes are from the property line?
The neighbors' homes to our property line? I don't have a survey of that property. I don't I don't know.
So in the back of this property, you have, what kind of lengths do you think?
Isn't there a fence back there, Mike?
Yeah, there's there's a board-on-board privacy fence. You can't, when you're back there in the backyard, you can't see.
If you're on the ground.
Correct, yeah, there's a.
Is there any landscaping there or just the fence?
On the neighbor's property or?
On this property.
Yeah, there's.
Or I can ask either, but yes.
On our property, there's existing landscaping. There's there's four trees, one in each corner. As we mentioned in testimony, we're gonna add to that. We're gonna propose two two more shrubs on the property.
There's nothing, it's a problem, but there's not no landscaping in the back that would minimize the ability to see the shed from the house behind the car.
Correct, the the shed will extend above where the fence is, but it's gonna be a nice white shed that kind of matches with the white board-on-board fence. So in terms of visual impact, I don't really see any.
The landscaping will be around the property line or will be around the shed or how are you planning to do that?
We're probably gonna put it along the side property, along the the left side property and then along the the right side, that kind of splits the condo units to provide a balance for the property. There's there's trees on all four corners, so we figure we'd provide a nice balance there by providing this other tip.
And the lot coverage is, I mean, it's substantial and your addition is not adding a lot to the current. But you're up to sixty-nine percent. Did you any analysis of lot coverages in the neighborhood?
Not in terms of analyzing each. Uh, not in terms of analyzing each property, uh, we did look at the, um, uh, aerial imagery of the entire kind of streetscape and, uh, we feel that we, we kind of fall in place with what's, what's there and, again, based upon the geometry of the lot, uh, narrow lot but deep lot, one of the common themes I came, I, I realized from that i- is that a majority of those lots do have detached structures to the rear, because that tightness doesn't allow a lot of room for attached garages and, in our case, it would impact our, uh, turnaround area behind the building.
I think it may have been an old horse barn, a lot of those, I, I could be wrong, but...
Did it look up?
Well, sort of rehab, but over time, a number of the houses, a number of the houses back there have, uh, what appear to be older sheds in the back, but just spec.
Well, as a professional engineer, given what Gary was talking about, de-ush in terms of lot coverage, um, could you propose any type of stormwater management to mitigate any of that sort of effects?
Uh, there's, there's no for the stormwater being proposed, I'll, I'll describe the drainage patterns. Uh, right now in the property today, um, you know, the lawn area, uh, located at the back flows towards the driveway, comes to the street, uh, where it enters the, the street drainage, doesn't impact the neighboring properties, that's what's going to, uh, happen in the future once the shed's built, so there's no impact to the, uh, to the neighboring properties in terms of drainage and then those couple of shrubs that were proposed are going to al- also help offset that, that increase.
The tree that's in the corner, the, like, we were facing it on the left, that tree's staying, right?
That's correct.
This may require, um, they will go to the engineering department for their, I believe their numbers, one hundred ninety, two hundred square feet, so you might have to lose one square foot, otherwise you might have to do drainage.
But that'll, that'll go through engineering.
It will go, and they'll determine whether they want, if they want any kind of stormwater management.
Okay. Um, what material is going to be on the, the surface?
For the shed.
Yeah, is it going to be...
It's, it's a slalom grade, right?
Yeah.
And will the, should be raised, elevated at all or...
Uh, just slightly.
Because it's a potential floodwater?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
One question's about the back, how close will this shed be to the fence?
So it measures, uh, four and a half feet to the rear property line, but, and then to the, to the fence, it's about, uh, two feet, approximately two, two and a half.
So my concern is the neighbors on the back there will see this pretty, I mean, it's going to exceed the, the fence line by quite a bit. Um, and you haven't, and I would feel more comfortable if you could move forward and put some evergreens there so they could block the view on the neighbors. I can't believe you'd do that, but...
Two feet?
Two feet, you're not going to reinforce anything. But maybe that's...
Question is, could you move it forward a little bit and try to put some plantings?
I mean, the tree won't survive back there.
Why?
Because it's, there's, there's a fence and there's a, a shed.
Right, you have to move, you have to move the shed up a little, but I'm just thinking about your neighbor's view from the back.
Yeah.
People that are back here probably aren't going to want to look at the back of the white shed.
How high does it extend beyond the fence?
So it's a, it's, it's a sloped shed, uh, shed, so the, on the low side, it's, it's same height as, as a, as a, as a fence.
How tall is the fence?
Uh...
It's sixteen.
I, I can't remember it.
It looked to be about four or five feet.
The fence in the back, Mike, do you remember?
Uh, no, it wasn't the height, it isn't on the survey, I don't recall.
I don't think it's six foot, but it sounds like it is.
Is there a basement in this existing structure?
Yes, it's, it's inside, the entrance is from the inside.
So you have a, is it a combined basement that you share with the, the condominium association?
No, no.
You each have your own basement?
Yes.
So you have storage?
Uh, it's indoor storage.
Yes.
So I have to go through my living room, the kitchen, no family room, so...
That's a coffee maker.
Yes.
Can't get that lawnmower from the...
Yeah, the, yeah.
Yes.
We would, we would agree to a condition of approval that there be no storage of coffee maker.
And people got a fifteen-foot height on a shed? That's a big shed, right? Like, what's tall?
I, I, I can't even, I'm sorry, I can't even remember how tall, fifteen feet is my guess, uh, my neighbor's shed.
But is it tied to the ceiling?
Um, no.
Okay, that's like a twelve-foot ceiling.
Probably at least tall, I'm six feet, and probably at least tall like eight. So I got that number wrong.
Because a fifteen-foot shed is enormous.
Yeah, it's...
You have a little room to keep it a little lower?
Yes, we'll keep it in line with my neighbors, uh, but I don't think it's fifteen feet in height.
Okay.
Uh, probably like eight.
Oh, yeah, okay. So the more reasonable, like, fifteen.
It must have been sixteen.
Fifteen feet, I, I got that number wrong.
What's the, is there a requirement for the height of an accessory structure?
It can be eighteen feet tall, my point is that a fifteen-foot tall shed that's only twelve and a half by sixteen is going to be very odd.
Yes. It's, it's, it's a, it's a one-story structure, so I guess it won't be a fifteen-foot.
Just a question, I mean, both the lot and the building coverage are over by a lot, right? I mean, this is a, this is a large size, which is, you know, certain size, but only over the limits by, by a lot. Now, were you as the owner or you as a professional involved in the creation, the structuring of this unit, because there is no garage, as you mentioned, in this, and still it's a very large structure by itself, even before the addition? I'm just trying to understand if there is any, you know, involvement from your side, either of your sides in this...
You ju- you just bought it?
Yeah.
And when did you buy it? Just a couple of years ago?
Three years ago.
Were you the original owner of this condominium either? The first owner?
Uh, I think it was renovated, I'm the first owner after renovation.
Okay, so recent? But this was, this guy?
Like, three years.
Because I, following up on what John Drew was saying, it's really messed up, you're over, and we, that area is not necessarily the flood zone, but there is tremendous flooding down there.
We appreciate that.
And the, and the pervert coverage that you're, that you're adding on to, which is even grossly higher, is even more so now.
We appreciate that, you know, that does balance against its two hundred square feet, um, matching the others, so we, we appreciate that fact that we are over. The suggestion is this is, um, a balance to get him something usable outside at two hundred square feet of additional impervious.
I do have one question, um, in, in this kind of townhouse or dual-lack situation, do we think about FAR? Uh, do we need to take that into our consideration, because we never talk about that, and then...
Notice for an FAR variance, I'm just looking to see here, in terms of zoning table.
Did it, uh, where, I'm sorry, go.
I know, go ahead.
Um, yeah, we didn't include FAR on the zoning table, the proposed shed wouldn't change that, um, and, uh, therefore, we, we didn't include it.
Was it over already? Is the FAR already over the limit that is described for this project?
I'd have to go back and look through the, um, what we submitted, um, application.
Is there the, is, I mean, I've got, just, maybe you know the answer, what is the square footage of the, the structures?
Of the house?
Of, of the whole building, right? All the levels, uh, do we have that somewhere here?
The number I published in the coverage table is the overall footprint of the dwellings, uh, which is approximately seventeen hundred square feet.
That's the first, the, the ground level?
Ground level, correct. Of, of both units as well.
Both units together, seventeen hundred.
Correct, correct.
So two stories, you have two or three stories?
Uh, I've got three, two and a half. That's what I did.
That includes the basement, two and a half or that?
No.
How, can you commit to a height limit? I think the, the board's certainly concerned.
Oh, yeah.
In part about the, the coverage, but in part about the bulk, the bulking and, uh, and the impact on the neighbors in the rear.
Oh, yeah.
So, could you, could you commit to a, you, you won't exceed the height of the existing, or can you give a firm number here to give the board?
We, yeah, we...
We know that, I think, we say fifteen or eighteen is permitted, but can you commit to a maximum height?
We'll stay, we'll stay at the maximum height as my neighbor's, uh, shed.
But what, what is, what is that? You don't have a measurement, we have a picture, Jason?
Uh, I'm on my phone.
How could you live with ten feet max, do you think, or...
Yes, ten feet is, is very high, and I think, I think his shed is less than ten, probably eight.
So, so this two and a half, two and a half story, what is the square footage of the home? Is that, is that stated here? I mean...
It's not on the plans, correct. Uh, we, I'd have to give you a calculation, we didn't include it because, again, we're not changing it.
It's seventeen hundred for both the units.
Correct.
Let's say it's half and half, so eight fifty square feet for each, each unit, A and B.
Approximately, yeah.
And then is that sort of the box structure, so would that be fair to say that it's eight fifty on top, or would you need...
Um, approximately.
So roughly you're saying that this is somewhere around two thousand square feet, two and a half story, is that fair to say, or...
Probably slightly less, I would say.
The square footage of your unit, do you know that? Eight, so if it's eight hundred times eight hundred, sixteen hundred, you have half of a third floor, what's on the top level? Bedrooms?
Yeah, just, uh, just the bedroom.
How many bedrooms you got up there?
Just one there.
Well, just one bedroom and a bath up there on the top floor?
Mm-hmm.
So four hundred square feet, I'm approximating, eighteen hundred, sixteen to eighteen hundred square foot.
That's the off floor, which is...
Modest, modest size, we're, we're trying to make it a little more workable by having something outside for bicycles, lawn equipment, sports equipment, uh, that sort of thing, so that there's a balance there, we, we appreciate there. Certainly is an existing coverage situation, it's there, I think the change is, is, uh, is, is very modest, the two hundred square feet to, uh, like other applications, try to, uh, bring it to what a modern family is looking for, imbalance, imbalance, not, not too much more, but something that makes the, the housing to use a little more functional.
Did you consider, um, it's a very large driveway, did you consider moving the shed closer to the driveway, so you're using up some of that, you know, your, your, some of the space, some of the coverage?
Onto the driveway?
Yeah.
I think why...
Yeah, they...
I was going to ask, yeah, I was going to ask. Or, or reducing the size of the driveway, or only reducing the size of the driveway by, or just putting, putting it at least partially on the driveway and then you can cover the...
Yeah, the, the design intention was to, you know, preserve the, the backyard area that, there's some nice outdoor play space, uh, which is why we put it towards the rear, comply with the setback, didn't want to touch the driveway, again, it provides access for the, uh, parking, uh, and also backup area, turning movements, um, which is why we proposed it in, in the, in the parking line.
Does it need, does the driveway need to be that big for the turning, the, the movements? I mean, what about cutting off some of the driveway, putting more grass down? And then we'd be reducing some of the coverage.
What's the width of the driveway there, Mike?
Yes, uh, it's about, um, twen- twenty-eight feet is the width, which, once you have a car parked, a typical space would be eighteen, um, although the cars is, is less, it, although it does look like there's a lot of room on paper, um, you know, that area is, is needed for, for parking, um, and for a backup area. You know, we're trying to, even for someone to back up, they're making a couple turning movements to get down the, the narrow driveway, um, I, I think it would be, uh, an impact to, to the, uh, traffic safety on the property if we were to, uh, reduce the driveway back there.
Looking at the zoning, at the, the project site map, uh, the air, you said you looked at the aerials for that, you haven't looked at each property there, but how many of those properties did you see had similar kinds of sheds? I mean, those properties are, they're the same, there's some variation, but how many of them do have, I should say, sheds?
Yeah, so especially on our side, on our north side of Sprint Street, uh, yeah, most of them did have some sort of, uh, detached structure, garage or shed.
Michael, I need your scale up there, um, our, our driveway on the west side encroaches onto the neighbor, could you just give an idea of what the square footage is?
The area that encroaches?
Yeah. Did, you see that on the survey map?
Yeah, uh, it's about a foot of an encroachment, you know, that runs the...
That's sixty feet?
Um, about seventy-five feet.
So that's even more impervious coverage, that's really not assessed for this lot, which I can, but in that area, that's even an official hundred square feet.
Correct.
Follow, Mike?
Yeah. Correct.
So would you say that driveway is about six hundred square feet?
The overall area of it?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the entirety, and again, it was, the zoning considers both lots was, uh, approximately twenty-five hundred square feet, so, you know, twelve fifty for each driveway approximately.
You have a suggestion, Mr. Simon? Possible suggestion, may help us sort of bridge the gap here a little bit, I appreciate the board's concerns, I'm trying to find a way to make it work if I can without taking too much time.
Right, so, um, if you look at the deviation in terms of coverage, um, for lot coverage in particular, it's sixteen point three percent, and, you know, even though we're talking about a two hundred square foot shed, um, you know, reducing coverage doesn't just go to stormwater impacts, it also, you know, go, I guess they'll have to also satisfy the, the negative criteria that provided proof for C1 to C2. Um, it seems like that there may be opportunity here to reduce lot coverage in that, by two minutes driveway area, where you would certainly be able to get more than two cars easy park, even if you reduce the, uh, convert.
Do you understand that, how, what the, what the concern is and how they're trying to address it? You're adding the two hundred and the suggestion is if you can sort of nip and tuck and, and find a little, find some area to take away pavement and add a little grass somewhere, I think that's going to help the board come to a favorable conclusion. We can try to come up with some square footage, or we can come back another night, I obviously prefer not to, to, to do that, but if you can commit to something, we can see if it can make sense for the board.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we sort of have to come back and go.
I'll just step in, I, I think the, the vibe that I'm getting from the board is that we would like to have you come back, we'd like to see, you know, really what this is going to look like with like a, you know, a, a rendering of, you know, with, with the exact height, um, I don't, you know, I don't want to...
It's a rose.
Yeah. So, uh, did, Mr. Mike had stated that it was, it was renovated and you, you were the first owner, once it was redone, you know, and it's reconstructed?
Uh, I think it was two thousand nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
Maybe we could check and see if, like, if they were allowed this variance previously in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, wouldn't it have to come before?
A variance for what?
The lot, there always is before.
If it was just built?
Well, the existing right now, it, prior to that, it, that, the shed on the other side is what puts it...
The, 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 the,
And I've also provided planning consulting services to the borough of Caldwell. My licenses are in good effect. Thank you.
Can I just ask, do we have an original copy, updated plans?
Yeah, there was no updated plans.
Okay.
So this is not as built?
This is, this is, um, the plans that the board has is virtually identical to what I had before you. I noticed that some of the shading didn't come out on your plan, so I did reprint it. It's called an A1, but it is A12232025. But it's the same document as part of your package dated 14th of 2024. Basically, what we did is we took the original grading plan and we superposed the
So the plan that was submitted to the board that they reviewed is the plan dated April 18th, 2024?
Correct.
Correct. And you're, you're marking a new exhibit?
Correct.
An A1 dated, what do you have of this?
I dated the A1 as today's date, 232025. But the drawing date in the title lot remains the same as what you have before you. And that was just because it appeared, and I looked at your plans, it appeared when I looked at the PDF that not all of the shading for the steep slopes came out in the drawings that you have. So I wanted to make sure that printer error didn't come up and print it too light to see. So I, I just decided to bring that with me today. Mark it as A1 because it is slightly different, but there's no additional information other than clarified steep slopes. Yep.
And is A1 just one page?
A1 is one page, correct.
Does it say drawing two?
It does say drawing, uh, it says drawing one on the bottom, so maybe my original said two, I'm not sure.
One, two, three, four.
Okay, one, yeah.
Does that say one?
It says one.
I have one that says two. I have one that says one and I have one that says two.
I think what we did is we gave Eileen an original copy. And then when we submitted the full sets for the board, we substituted, the intent was to substitute out that and get rid of that number two. And Eileen must have two copies, the original copy that she deemed complete and scheduled. And then when we submitted the 13 copies and one original is what we
That's why it should be with the A1.
Should be, please.
That makes sense.
And when you start going over this, David's point, do you think this identifies sort of what of this is an as-built and what is the requirements?
Well, we started, this is actually represents an as-built of what's on the site. Whenever we go for a certificate of occupancy, whether there's any deviation, whether it requires variance relief or not, engineering insists that the latest drawing in their file represents that everything that was built was on our plans. So in this case, what we did is we took the as-built survey of where those walls exist today. And we super, we updated the grading plan and we showed a new steep slope disturbance line, which is the heavy blue line you see around the steep slopes. And so originally, I think we had 874, and that goes up to, I believe it's 2570, uh, sorry, 2750. So whereas 1,000 square feet is permitted, instead of 1,000 square feet, we're now 1,750 square feet over that permitted 1,000 square feet for a total disturbance of 2750. So this plan basically, there's not much difference to this versus what was approved. But we did locate the walls exactly and got the heights exactly so that we made sure we were quantifying the amount of variance relief we're requesting that was consistent with what we've built. And we didn't find there was a discrepancy in a few inches or a few feet. The, um, the property, um, just to, just to cross the Ts and dot the Is, is a 29,098 square foot lot in the R4 residential zone. So it's an oversized lot where 20,000 square foot lots are required. It is located along Hart Shore Drive where it curves from the R4 zone into the R5 zone to our left. It is exactly at the terminus where, actually where Western Drive tees into Hart Shore Drive. The, um, the lot was created by subdivision in 2017 when we split it off from the adjoining lot. That was a, uh, the lot on the right had 97,000 square foot remaining. So it was about five times what was required. And the new lot had about 1.5, 1.45 times the required 20,000 square feet. Uh, and as is indicated in early 2019, uh, the parcel was purchased by 386 Hart Shore LLC with its sole member, Tim O'Brien, uh, as an investment property. I had never met him, but actually we had done work for Tim before because he's been a resident since 2007. He purchased the old Loesch residence at 105 Old Shore Hills Road. 1854 farmhouse that Virginia Loesch opened for years. Until the fire two years ago, it was one that had all of the, um, the exuberant Christmas lights, not overdone, but exuberant Christmas lights along Old Shore Hills Road. Uh, as indicated, they've been out of town with a fire. So there's been a number of things that have distracted Mr. Um, O'Brien from kind of keeping on top of his contractors. Plans were submitted and approved in summer of 2019, worked with Mike Shirella, uh, actually a very good architect out of Summit. He's had a couple of very high-end home additions in, in town. We're happy to work with him. And unfortunately, this is often the case, even though I'd done a survey for Tim, we hadn't started working on this pool yet at, at 105 Old Shore Hills Road. So all of my interaction was, as is often with Mike Shirella, the architect. And we labored over getting a house that fit into the property. And also because the property is irregularly shaped in that piece of pie that comes back with a tail that extends back behind the hole next to it. And we worked with the architect to devise a series of stairs and patios that would not put us over the steep slope requirements. There is a swath of steep slopes that was, um, when we did the original subdivision, we kind of showed when they constructed the property next door, they pushed the level pad and created a swath of steep slopes. It's been there for probably 40 years. So I know our ordinance doesn't make a distinction between natural slopes and artificially created steep slopes, but the purpose of the ordinance does. So, um, there was this swath that, um, there was a flat area up in that little flag off to the left, a little flat area at the top. The big area right behind the patios was steep at about 20, uh, 24 to 24 and a half percent. So the, um, and I would say, um, you know, contrary to, or this is the last time you're gonna see me on a mea culpa application. I was here for a reason. And, and contrary, and I promise, contrary to the last one where it was always the architect's idea to ultimately solve a problem by going for a variance, that was not the case. My client was very clear when we started having contact that they did not want to go for a variance. They wanted to build what was, what was shown, sell the property and move on. So there was certainly never an ulterior motive to do a, uh, a, uh, to request a variance. The, um, so we received that fully compliant, um, approval to start construction. Mr. O'Brien, not being a seasoned contractor, originally hired Bob Mittermeyer, who was the zoning officer from, um, Maplewood. A good reason to never retire, shortly after he retired and was going to take on this project, Mr. Mittermeyer had a stroke and could not take on the project. So, um, there was another referral, again, and Mike Malia started. It was a little above his scope, so after the foundations were installed, um, he was removed from the project. And, uh, after cutting off his left thumb on the fourth day of cutting framing, just to show the little jinxed here on this property. The, um, at that point, they hired Puzio Brothers on a referral. I had never worked with them, but they began, uh, construction. Construction basically started right about the time that COVID kicked off. Uh, actually, uh, that was shortly when, uh, Tim had one of, uh, eight related, um, COVID strokes. So Tim has been also kind of distracted and of course naturally not being a builder relied on his contractors to do what was correct. Without understanding those steep slope restrictions, which are, they're in a lot of towns, but they're unique to Milburn. A lot of towns like Livingston have completely, um, gone away with steep slope variance. They've steeped designated lots, which you have to do a report on. A lot of towns have realized that we are an already developed area and that, uh, these slopes, um, that are on these residential properties, uh, we can build on them. We know how to build on them without causing any erosion or negative impact. So unfortunately for contractors who claimed to know Milburn but didn't, I think they were sort of unaware of the steep slope restrictions. Um, so without consulting us, uh, without consulting, um, the zoning officer or the engineering department as construction wore on for three years or so, the builder said, you know, it's awfully steep above these walls. We could do some decorative walls, and then, you know, where decorative was used quite a bit. Um, and that's also a misconception amongst builders because if walls are less than four feet, they generally don't require structural calculations or consider landscape walls. Sometimes call them decorative walls, sometimes don't require permits for them. Uh, we do require permits and the caveat is when they are in steep slopes, then we have some restrictions about the height of the walls and the separation of those walls, et cetera. And obviously the builder was not aware of the steep slope, um, just additional steep slope disturbance that was going to be created. So again, um, although the, there was no permits that we can tell were taken for the, for the construction of the walls, the footings, the, their modular block, they don't actually have footings, they have base courses. There was inspections done by the building department. And I would say, uh, Craig Platenor actually had a meeting with the township officials and building code officials to sort of find ways of making sure that plans when they come in don't get routed directly into building, that they from now on go to zoning. So these kinds of things don't happen in the future. And that was just at the end of last year, um, shortly before Craig retired. So the contractor, um, installed these walls. There's a, you can see the area above the wall that sits above the finished site. Let me just go to my A2 exhibit. A2 being dated today's date, A2, 2000, uh, not 232025. It is designated as photo board number one. All photos were taken by myself on July 15th, 2024. That's the date of the original without me be here. Photograph number one is looking at the driveway between the original property that we subdivided off, uh, the subject property from 368, 364. You can see it's relatively flat driveway. As we come into the backyard, you can see this is the planting strip right behind the, the wall that binds the patio. And you can see a relatively small flat area was created so that there was a play area for kids, possibly as soon as they could be put in there, et cetera. Photograph number three shows the back of the existing house. And this is another variance we need because the contractor was also not aware that placing a, uh, a fence on top of a wall, if you don't separate it by three feet, you have to aggregate the height of the fence and wall together. And since fences or walls can't be higher than six feet in a backyard, as soon as you put a four-foot fence on top of a six-foot wall, you now have a 10-foot assembly. So even though it's, it's open and diapetus and it, and doesn't create a sense of enclosure, the fact that that fence is put up right on top of the wall does necessitate our third variance. So two are related to the steep slopes and one is related to the location of the fence, a jarret style fence, uh, style fence, wrought iron style fence on top of the wall. You can see on photograph number four, this is the house that's under construction. It's, it's much further along now, um, to our left or to the west. And that is a house on the left, it's in construction of 370. And you can see our walls that step up and the walls that are in the back can really barely be seen even when you come up the driveway and look into the back. So certainly from the street, there's really no evidence. And because we retained into the property, the properties behind us can't see them. So we're really creating a little amphitheater on our, our own property. It really has no visual negative impact on the neighbors. Again, here you can see in photograph number five, this is the retaining wall around the patio. And there's that jarret style fence with some landscaping behind it by being black aluminum, uh, wrought iron style, you see the landscape through it. And again, it doesn't create that sense of enclosure. And the same as number five is looking above the, um, from the outward, um, kitchen, looking in that area. Now, the reason that the contractor, uh, put the fence there is because they felt it would be a safer condition than putting it three feet back. Because at three feet back, they were worried the kids could get in from the sides, kind of play in that area, football, if you had it back, the ball go in the area, they'd run, they'd find a way in from either side. And they would run in there and they could constantly fall down that six-foot fence. So there was some safety logic to the rationale for that. And I'll talk about why I think that, uh, that can be approved and, and, uh, needs both positive and negative criteria in a second. But that's a, that's a photograph of what the site looks like, uh, at least back in, in July. I was there today again, uh, sort of, there's been no change because the site's been, they haven't been able to put the house on the market for a year and a half now since we did the original survey.
Can you just go back to A1?
Yep.
I think it would be helpful to the board to identify the significance of the dashed blue lines on the front.
Yep.
And then, and then if you can tie that explanation into photo board number one.
Yep. So right now, um, the steep slopes that were on the site started about three quarters of the way through the patio on the one side. And then they went back and you can see there's the, the shaded area. The blue line indicates the amount of steep slope disturbance that were reported. So originally we were just disturbing to about three feet behind that wall and maybe, uh, four feet behind that wall, and nothing else was to be touched. There was a small section of steep slopes on the left side of the back of the driveway. Almost small enough to be exempt, but it wasn't, so we showed it. So between these two properties, these two, um, gray areas, we had a total of 8,473 square feet. The area we proposed to disturb, or actually did disturb, in that case, there's an area on the left side. And then there's the area behind the property. Those two areas bound by the blue dashed line represents a total of 2,750 square feet. So the discrepancy or the increase over the original, um, 875, how it went from 875 to 2750 essentially goes from that, uh, just behind the 398 contour up, I don't know, but, okay, hold on.
Yeah. I like this. So the record reflects that you're drawing on A1.
Yeah, A1, correct. So it's already exhibit. So if we talk about, so that's the increase in steep slope disturbance over the permitted 870.
From the record, when you say that represents
The, the purple crosshatch section that I just drew on A1. And that represents an area that is at its deepest about 30 feet. At its nominal point, it's about, uh, seven feet. And it runs about 95 feet along that ridge right in there. So the crosshatch purple section is the amount, uh, we exceeded the original intent. So we had about, we had about, uh, 27 square feet available still. So maybe that would take off a little tab. But essentially the crosshatch purple area is the part of the property that, uh, we've increased the amount of steep slope disturbance beyond what's permitted by code. I would point out that it was not a grab to get a pool. It was not a grab to get, uh, an additional shed or an additional play area. It was really an area that I think the contractor made sense. It would be helpful if there was a flatter area rather than having only flattish area backwards, it's separated from the house. And that the, uh, it would be a relatively simple wall construction, which it was. Again, um, those walls in, the walls are four feet. And what's interesting is the walls actually technically, um, go a little above the grade behind. And that allows for water to come behind and be diverted around and it's up in our retention system. But the walls didn't need to quite be four feet. They probably are about 3.75 feet than what they retain. But the wall is four feet. And when you have a four-foot wall, means your two four-foot walls, you need to separate them by four feet. Our, our nominal separation at one point is 3.75 feet. So the separation is off by about three inches. However, you know, it's because the wall comes, kind of comes above grade. So we're almost a four feet. And, and in non-step slopes, the ordinance would say we could be separated by three feet. And I think as I've told this board in the past, um, the township engineer has opined on other steep slope variances that the need for that separation or the recommendation for that separation is to ensure that the walls don't interact. But if they do interact, you just need to show that you've designed the footings properly. There is the proper amount of geofabric behind these, so they are stable. They've been up for almost two years now. There's no signs of any, um, destabilization, settlement around them. There's no rotation. They're well-constructed walls that, uh, that do not, uh, have not moved since they were put in.
So the, um,
Are there six, six, six-foot fences up on the wall?
No, there are no, there aren't, there's nothing above, those are, those are four feet. Range from four feet at its highest to 3.75 feet highest. There is no, um, there's no fencing on top of those.
So fencing is on the lower.
It's only on the lower wall. And again, that goes basically from, I'm drawing a purple again, I don't have the color with me. So that basically goes from about there to there where you aggregate. So, so from the left side, from about the rear line of the house, along the retaining wall that bounds the patio curving and then doubling back toward the air conditioning units on the side, that's where that fence is. Now that's where you have a six-foot drop onto a patio. Up, up above, you have a 3.75-foot drop onto landscaping, which is where my kid would be jumping off every day with his bicycle or his snowboard. But, um, what the, uh, the contractor felt was more important to have some safety along the hard patio in the area, the kids are gonna play in this area, it's more likely the walls are gonna be that in that area. And, um, separating 3.75 feet would possibly allow for kids to get in from the sides and then still be exposed to that, uh, that drop. So, uh, could that be moved back? It could be moved back. But it's, uh, it's fairly benign, as was indicated by the photographs, because of its open nature. Again, it doesn't feel like it encloses, it doesn't feel like the safety has, it doesn't feel like it's negative to the community. And, uh, it's, it's, it's done throughout the community, whether it's done with by variance or predates zoning. There are certainly evidence on it, but, but, you know, we don't know how they got there. So with regard to, so those are the three variances we need. The, uh, again, the area, flat area we created was about 1,500 square feet on this 29,100 square foot lot. Uh, and again, the disturbance was not created in the service of creating additional accessory uses. As we know, flattening, uh, the slopes allows for stormwater runoff to more efficiently be managed and to prevent accelerated runoff into our, both our yard and to the rear of the neighbors. Flattening the yard, um, actually slowed the water down. Uh, and the fence on the top of the retaining wall represents what we think is a safer alternative than providing a three-foot separation instead of where children can access the top of the wall from the yard. With regard to the positive criteria, we think it is that again, between C1 and C2, appearing in municipal land use law 4055, D70, C1. Um, and C1 is where the shape of the property and the existing, what we think is man-made property creates a hardship in creating even a small amount of recreational, recreational green space without the need for variance relief. And C2, where the purposes of the land use act are advanced. And we think that's the, that's the flexible C variance, where the proposed plan represents a better planning alternative than a conforming plan and where the benefits outweigh the detriments. We think that with regard to the steep slopes disturbance, uh, the purposes of the act under 4055, D2 is A, general welfare, uh, allows for the development of dwelling and yard that is consistent with other homes in the neighborhood and with the amenities one would expect for a home in this neighborhood. Uh, the project as developed represents a net, uh, benefit to the community in the form of a reduction of overall stormwater runoff through the installation of the stormwater collection system or recharge. All of the water behind those walls, uh, water from the walls is direct into that stormwater management system. So there's no negative impact created by the construction of those walls. And with regard to the fence, we think safety is advanced, um, and certainly aesthetics to the neighbors. The neighbors can't really see it, all they see is a clear fence and they don't even necessarily see the walls below it. With regard to the negative criteria, um, obviously we need to demonstrate the two prongs, that there's no substantial detriment to the public good and there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the master plan. And mitigating any impacts on the neighborhood is that's barely seen from the street. There's existing landscaping up on top of the walls and to the sides of the property that, that limit and break down that mass, so you don't see the, the control, the combined effect of the, the fence and the walls not solid. And then when it comes to the negative criteria, um, you know, case law, starting with, um, Burberry and running through Coventry Square and then through a lot of other, um, through, um, some of the other case law that deals with height and things like that, is the, the courts have often said, it's instructed to look at the purpose of the ordinance when you, when you decide whether, um, on balance, that the benefits outweigh the detriments. And if we look at the purposes of the act, and one of the things that's nice is this came down from a DEP mandate. So unlike much of our ordinance, it actually has a preamble that talks about, um, why the ordinance exists. And it says under 608.1, these controls are provided to minimize the potentially adverse impacts associated with the disturbance of steeply sloped areas. Such regulations promote public health, safety and welfare in the township by limiting disturbance to soil, vegetation and control of erosion in steeply sloped areas. Um, and so the background under 608.2 is that, um, the feeling that disturbance of steep slope areas can result in accelerated erosion control processes from stormwater runoff. I would point out that's not the case here. Actually, soil erosion, soil, you know, when you're talking about slopes that are 25%, that's actually less than Soil Conservation District allows you to implement. So they, they say you go up to 33% putting a slope in and you can still maintain that as law without having to do any kind of stabilization. Flattening area, um, about, uh, between the walls actually slows what was stormwater down where it could be easily intercepted as it is now and routed into the stormwater, uh, devices, which is what's happened here. Uh, it also says that the subsequent sedimentation of water bodies with the associates, uh, is associated with degradation of, uh, quality and loss of aquatic life. There are no water bodies downhill to affect this. Related effects per the ordinance include soil loss. There's been no soil loss in Soil Conservation District. We, we received the plan, we received the certification upon completion. So there's been no erosion, uh, and that was certified by the Soil Conservation District. Changes in natural topography and drainage patterns, and this is where we talk about natural topography. And we would again cite that these steep slopes were created when the, when the house next door was built. Um, we know that it's not natural. I know that our ordinance doesn't make that distinction, but I know a longtime stalwart of this board and the township committee, Mary McNett, that was the first thing she always asked on the steep slopes, were they natural? And if they were natural, she felt like this really didn't, it applied less. And that's why I focus on that. Increased flooding potential, um, there's no increased flooding potential. We're slowing water down, uh, and we're collecting the roof water from this property into a stormwater management system that was approved by the, uh, engineering department as well as Soil Conservation Service. Uh, it talks about increasing flooding potential, which doesn't do, uh, further fragmentation of forest and habitat areas. Really wasn't a forested area to begin with, uh, and compromised aesthetic values. We think that the retaining walls, uh, and the perimeter, um, of all the property are, um, fully landscaped and attractive. Because of the nature of just cutting into the slope, there's really no negative aesthetic value. Furthermore, the ordinance says it has become widely recognized that disturbance of steep slopes should be restricted or prevented based upon the impact disturbance of steep slopes can have on water quality and quantity uh, and the environmental integrity of landscapes. Again, water quality will not be affected. There is no increase of runoff. We know essentially how to build in steep slope areas. I do agree that if, if, the intent was never to come for a variance. If we had come for a variance ahead of time, I think we could have made this argument. And as Mr. Caulfield has said, the, the board didn't have the opportunity to say, couldn't you make the building smaller? Couldn't you do something to mitigate against that? But I think in this case, the house really is appropriate to the size lot. I think that we would have been here either way. I think if the contractor hadn't sold my client a lot of goods, that this was fully conforming and it would be a better marketable product, we would have built it. I think what likely would have happened is the new buyer would have bought it. And then I'd have been representing that owner coming for you in a year saying, well, you didn't build it, but let's look at, can we give you another thousand square feet of steep slopes? So I think that, I think that there's good justification of C1, C2, both the positive and negative criteria to support this variance relief. The, um, the proposed house is consistent with homes in the community and the amenities reinforce the existing character of the neighborhood. Uh, one of the benefits of the work having been done for a year and a half is because we can see that there's been no negative impact to the property or neighborhood. Uh, it's not inconsistent with the overriding purpose of the master plan to maintain the character of the township as a suburb of the highest quality. And I would also point out what concerns me when we looked at, um, you know, the, it might've been quick, cheaper for my client to just get in there and backfill that area a year and a half ago and not come for the variance. Now, we weren't, we haven't been queued up in the variance. I think we're supposed to be like here last June, so things have cascaded along. But we discovered this probably six months before that. It would have been probably cheaper in the long term to, to, to somehow bury those walls. But we had some real concerns over the impact of getting machinery back up there. It's a difficult site to get in there, to remove those walls and reestablish those steep slopes. I think it's less likely that those soils would be compacted as well as they were compacted naturally over the last 30 years. I think that, um, some of the purposes of the steep slope ordinance that we're looking to protect erosion and non-control of, of stormwater, I think is what we would create by trying to I think is what we would create by trying to remove those walls and place fill back in to recreate the twenty four percent slopes that were there. I have more concerns about that being a destabilized area causing problems for the patio, for the new owner, et cetera, down the line. Than I do with the two walls which went in place to really slow down the erosion, slow down the water. So we think that it certainly could meet the criteria of both the positive and negative under C1 and C2. And certainly happy to answer any questions. I don't have any questions.
I just wanna just ask a quick question. The, for the municipal steep slope disturbance, it's probably because when you go and visit the property, everything is obviously disrupted. Could you just show on the other picture, like the actual photographs?
Yep.
What was permitted, was it really just the whole patio area?
Yeah, the patio.
Is that really anything beyond that is not technically permitted?
I'm drawing on A2 photograph number three. About three to four feet behind the wall. Essentially, that slope would have gone from about this point up to that point. So all of this would have been filled at about twenty three percent coming down into this three foot strip. And then over the wall, which, you know, we've got drainage behind this wall, so this could be replaced with stone, we could pick up some of that drainage in behind there. To make it a little better, the fence could be technically moved back, if you try to find an edge condition. But I think it's pretty de minimis in its visual impact on the site. But from those two photographs, I think that's the best you'd see. So essentially from here, photograph number six, again, if you just draw a line that comes down off that slope into, this would be all sloping down. Into this area in here, about three to four feet behind the wall.
Basically, the patio area is really?
Patio area is, plus three, four feet is the limit. Yep. And again, twenty three to twenty five percent is not crazy steep, you can mow it. But it's not, it's not like you're gonna play, have a good game of catch up there with your kid, let's put it that way. It's sloping enough, it's four to five on one, so for every five feet you go out, four feet you go out, you go up one foot. So if you're gonna play, kick a soccer ball around, my son played soccer at the top of Sagamore Road and if he lost the ball, it was down at Wyoming or Downing. So he claimed he was a better soccer player before. But it's, it's not an area that was really conducive. The only area that you created some flat area to possibly throw a ball was really to go up, make a left and go behind the property to our left.
This is one other question before everyone else was, if someone purchases that house and they want to put a pool, would they be able to?
Would they be able to? Structurally, I think it'd be very difficult. I think they would be back to this board for other variants. Because it's really, it'd be really hard to get, actually, no, they couldn't, because we'd be over on lot coverage. Yeah, we're butting up against our lot coverage now. So absolutely, any move to put a pool or even a spa in would require a trip back to the board.
I actually live in the neighborhood. Anyway, question, just clarification, you said that they were approved plans that didn't require variance?
Correct.
Why didn't the builder adhere to them?
You know, I don't know. Everyone always gets this bright idea like, oh, the engineer was so stupid. When it comes to steep slopes, we're very careful about what we do, and I worked with the architect, created a series of walls and patios and terraces that didn't require more than thousands of square feet of steep slopes. Inevitably, again, when we get detached from the project and now I have letters that go out warning my clients that this is what they have to deal with, I make them sign it. If I get a client, if I get a builder that is designing something with what I think is inadequate backup, I get someone to sign it. I'm trying to make sure that I get some penetration down to the end user. But essentially, at some point, the builder said, you know, that engineer is an idiot. Like, all he has to do is do a couple of decorative walls which are fully permitted by code, less than four feet, and we could get a nice little play area for the kids. And my client, a lot of distractions, but basically said, if it meets code. Again, part of the reason they moved to Short Hills is they went through a variance in Maplewood and said, we're never going for a variance again. They ended up on Old Short Hills Road. Now here we are, fast forward. And basically, you know, there are, a local investor, wasn't a builder. And so no one called me, no one ran this by Eileen's office, which is what should have happened. And I think if my client ever builds another house, he will certainly make sure anything gets routed through, if not me. Though he's afraid I'm gonna charge them, Eileen doesn't charge.
The builder's not here tonight, is he?
No, the builder was fired and the builder is refusing to have anything to do with it and he certainly wasn't gonna come. And admitted in an open court that he didn't follow a plan because it would just be part of a lawsuit if this doesn't get approved.
This sounds a lot like the application that we heard from them.
Yep. Different circumstances, though, that one, there was always sort of an intent that the way to work that, make that property work was gonna need variance at some point. This one, there was never that intent.
And just quickly, you had made the comment that the lot wasn't ordered, forested, but why did it was actually forested?
Most of it, we actually located the trees that were on it. The, the trees that were, there were a couple of large trees, most of the trees were in the back, the trees were on the adjoining property. But the area that we removed trees, those were mostly ten, twelve inches, there was a fifteen and a twenty five inch, so.
Over time, because it had been a property that was attached to the other one, it was like, whores.
Yeah, well, yeah, I will say, you know, it's interesting, if you look at photographs from Highland Avenue, from the turn of the century, when Highland was created. It's farmland as far as you can see, and now it is wooded.
And then the last thing, you said manmade hills, presumably, but that's your assumption because you don't have any?
No, but when we did the, when we did some subdivision, you can see they created a big plateau for the house to be built. Sits at the very top, drops to the back, and you can see that the slopes were pushed. If you look at the adjoining properties, they weren't, they were more evenly graded, and this was part of that property. So when you see the slopes, it was when they created, they pushed a flat area, it got steep through here and it went back to natural slopes, which was not steep. So again, when.
But Hartshorn Drive is down here.
Oh yeah, it's up high, but it wasn't steep, it was, it was less than, it was roughly fifteen or twelve percent. But it's just a section here that it goes up to twenty percent. And again, when you have, when you're coming up a fifteen percent and then you see a steep section before a building pad, it kind of clues us in. And I've studied the topography when we did the subdivision for Gendos up on this property. And you can see when you look at the whole ridge that there was a push to create a building pad here that had impacts on either side. So it's my professional opinion.
My regard last day is a steep slope now.
It is a steep slope now, yep.
Thanks.
But again, you know, we have an ordinance that prohibits disturbance of steep slope because there's the potential to do all these bad things. So when you look at the purpose of the ordinance, I think it allows us to move away from just looking at the numbers and saying, well, what is the real world impact? On that excess fifteen hundred square foot or seventeen hundred square foot disturbance? And is it cutting against any of the purposes of which, why, of why we have steep slope ordinance? And I think in this case, it doesn't. So that's why I think it deserves consideration under both C1 and C2 and certainly meets the negative criteria.
Yeah, Rich, do we have the original architecturals on this?
I don't have the original architecturals.
We didn't have it last time either, it would be, last one we did. I think one of the reasons, you appeared to this in July, Craig and I actually requested a whole bunch of.
Oh, I didn't, somehow that.
And you did the survey in twenty sixteen, that'll show the trees that were there as well.
Yeah, well, the trees that are on, the trees, this is the base survey, so anywhere you see an X is where there was a tree.
Oh, okay.
So all of the base survey is underneath that survey.
And the reason I asked about the architecturals is that the patio wall, that was, that was always part of the project?
Yeah.
Okay, was it always gonna be a six foot wall?
I think originally, it was gonna be a combination, I think there was one height wall in here, we had a couple steps up. We could cut that down to, it was like a two steps up to a five foot wall. And that was done away with, but to know, there was no increase in the impervious area, they just decided rather than having a step up. I think originally, there might have been a step change in the house, but I'm not positive. But I know at one point, we had two levels of patio roughly the same size, maybe. I don't recall, but the, there always was a retaining wall holding back that steep slope area.
And what would, what would it entail as far as bringing back the original slope? You mentioned backfill.
Well, yeah, there's no, you know, back. A while back, we possibly could have gotten access through the neighboring properties, that's really no longer possible. So you'd have to, I think you'd have to remove the retaining wall. Where you've got the two, two foot rise up into the upper patio. You'd probably have to, you'd probably damage most of that patio and you would either have to get a large machine up there enough to lift a backhoe up into that area. Or you need to disassemble a significant proportion of that wall to allow machines to get up in there. You could technically probably knock off a foot on top of, a foot on top of the upper wall. And knock off two feet on top of the lower wall and then bury the walls. And then create a twenty five percent, twenty four and a half percent slope that comes back into a point that's about three to four feet off the back of existing retaining wall. And then you'd have to rebuild your way back out, rebuild.
Rebuild the patio.
Rebuild the patio, rebuild the wall that you damaged, et cetera, put that all back together. Because at one point, before this house started construction, we possibly could have come back and gotten in this way. But there's really no access from the right, no access from the left, so it's really gotta be up that left side and take apart considerable unexisting patio and walls. And then I'm concerned about, again, you know, you get a backhoe in there and yeah, we can, we can get guys with jumping jacks and they can do compaction. But you always worry, it's not as though it had thirty years of, or thirty or forty years of settlement back in there to create it. So I always worry that if I'm creating twenty five percent slopes, if it's not backfilled properly, if there's any problems with it. A, two things, one is it automatically runs more water right against the back of the house, down into that patio. Because we, walls right now are intercepting that and accommodating into the drywall system. And if I, if I, if I let that run, I get water on my patio, which could be icing. There are some inlets, but there's not a lot of inlets out there. I could try reworking the grades a little bit on the top, again, to get a little swell in there, but I'm limited by that, by that limit of steep slope disturbance if I try to go back to a conforming plan. And then I worry about, if it's not compacted, then I do risk getting erosion, which is exactly what the ordinance seeks to prevent.
Just, you know, Mr. Aslan, we were referring to another project we had that was something exactly similar, the builder went off the road and did this, and Mr. Keller happened to be locked out through that project.
Yeah.
I promise, I will never be here again for these things.
If you, if you remember the earlier July, we actually had an objector, I'm just wondering, did you or anybody speak to?
I've met with Betty Grayson and Stan Kurzweil, I've met them a number of times at their site. Demonstrated that our project did not have an adverse impact on the drainage. Stan reluctantly agreed that we didn't, you know, the water couldn't go across the center line, up the curb and three feet up onto his property. Sort of got, we walked the property during a heavy storm. And he sort of acquiesced that gravity does what gravity does. And I tried to make them aware of each time that, I emailed it personally, both Betty and actually Stan. Each time we adjourned, because we didn't have a return for a while, so I've emailed them each time. And I'm assuming based on my last conversation with Stan, that he recognized, I think when I, when I offered to help him figure out his drainage problem. She hasn't called me back yet, but, because it's an isolated drainage problem, it's caused by the development next door to him and some endemic problems on his own property. So I think that they've been made comfortable, their only concern, Betty's only concern from day one has been drainage. And it was really just some bad feeling she had from the developer that went right next to her a few years back. But I met with them at least three times.
I just have a quick question if anyone else does. How far, what is the elevation of this house above Hartshorn Drive?
We'll tell you that exactly. Three ninety two, three, so it's ten feet above, actually, nine feet above the curb right at the center of the property, the first, the finished first floor. So obviously, when you come up, we've got three ninety, then the three eighty three and a half. So there's six and a half feet grade change, one, two, three, four, five, six and a half feet grade change up to the walk. And then you come up from three ninety ten up to three ninety three, so you come up about three feet up the stairs, the landing, and finally the house. So the house, most houses sit about two to two and a half feet above the grade all around so that they're protected from water. That's about normal, and as I said, the.
Twelve, fourteen?
No, actually, as I said, to the finished floor, not the, not the, not the ground.
To the finished floor.
Finished floor above the grade at this point, I've got nine point four feet. If I come over to this side over here, it's dropping, so then I do come up to, the curb is three eighty two. So I come up to about, actually, three, three, I come up to about, from the low side, it's about nine feet, from the middle, it's about seven to eight feet. And from the high side, we're at three eighty five, I think that's all about eight feet. To the finished floor, not the ground outside.
And with regard to this one variance, the combined fence and wall height, would it help if you moved the fence back a little? I know you made the concern about children being, oh, yeah, I know, I'm not gonna mention that in, over the summer when I was there the first time. Would it help, variance, if you move that fence back? How far would you have to move fence back to get rid of this variance?
Three feet.
Three feet. So what would happen if you put landscaping in front of the fence? That would take care of your problem of worrying about children going in from the fence and falling down into the pit?
Unless, unless you use barberry or holly, the kids still.
They're gonna get there no matter what.
Yeah, but so, but look, we could probably find a clunky edge detail to wrap the fence into the top of the wall somehow, into the railing. So could it be moved back yet? We could eliminate that variance by moving that fence back three feet. Across, I think, certainly across the entire back and the right side. I'd have to look, it looks like we could do it throughout, we might have a little problem on just the side of the house. But certainly across the entire backyard, we could push that back three feet and comply.
Put some kind of a bush or something in front of it.
Yeah, wait, there's plants there now.
But anyway, it's just low hanging fruit.
Yeah, we just, we just moved the fence on the other side of the landscape that's already there.
It's not your biggest problem, but it's just something.
Yes, correct, thank you.
Seems like the water management system around the periphery of the house is, based on your testimony, is working fine based on the walls. And moves and goes into the storage, et cetera. What about the variant, the tail end, how's that sort of topography, the bottom moving from the back end, the one which is at the back of the neighbor on the left?
The back end, well, we, there's no changes, this continues to run down and whatever, there's a new home here that has this utter destruction. And so I'm sure they have a grading plan that takes into account whatever water comes off the property of here. But that was, this has been this way since that was house was built back in the sixties. So this has been, this is an existing drainage pattern that we have not changed at all. And obviously, these guys here are under construction, they would have had to get a grading plan with a drainage requirement of stormwater management. And if I was doing that, I would be intercepting water coming off that hill and routing that around my property too. So I'm assuming that they did that, and that's what the engineer would have required.
Based on your, your assessment, goes towards neighbors talking, not towards?
Yeah, this whole, by the contours, again, the contours, water goes perpendicular to the contour. So you can see these contours running this way, the water is running, and I'm drawing a purple line on my A1 in the back of the property to show the water direction of, of water coming off that basically aligns perpendicular to the contour lines is the way the water will flow. And so this water is all coming down, perhaps somebody going around it, but this wall has been, since this house was built back in, I think, the sixties, I think it was, I forget, my fifties or sixties. That's been the existing drainage pattern there for a long time. And it's not, it's not coming down through our property and towards, towards Hartshorn or Western.
Oh, I'm sorry, were you done? You mentioned that some trees beyond what was obviously the tree removal plan have been removed?
No, actually, everything, everything was removed, was consistent with the removal plan.
Okay, so those ones that were beyond the boundary?
Yeah, those are, those are all still there to my knowledge, I'm pretty sure they're all still there. Anything behind the walls?
No, not behind the walls, between what was originally approved and then the retaining walls, they're in that crescent shape, there's some trees.
That's.
The patio area, I believe.
The only one that, the only one that, all of the ones on the patio were on the original removal plan?
Yes.
The only one I'm not certain about is because the trees are no longer there, but I don't think that that tree is.
And then there are a couple, like, what appear in the retaining wall?
Well, those, the ones that are in the retaining wall, those were all scheduled to be removed, the ones inside, those are all less than ten inches in size. So they're, the ones that were less than ten inches are not, they don't fall under the tree replacement ordinance?
Just, I'm trying to help you, Rich, is it possible that those little X's that you're drawing, it might be a fence line that you're?
No, I'm referring to these.
Yeah, the reality is that. Yeah, no, the reality is that there are a number of trees that are depicted on your plan that are within the limits of disturbance. Correct. That are not shown as being removed. Right. And why? I believe that they do, they are less than 10 inches in diameter and therefore exempt from the tree replacement ordinance?
Does your identification as to their diameter, rest heights, or otherwise on the plans? Because I don't see that.
I can't read it from here. Generally, when we put a circle around it, is when it starts to rise that level, either it's a specimen tree or rises to the level of being under the ordinance. So the trees that are off to the right, those still exist. The tree behind, I believe, still exists. The ones that are, lie between the retaining, well, this, this retaining, the tree I pointed at behind the retaining wall, that was always scheduled to be removed, I think, or it's less than, less than the prescribed diameter. They see on the patio, there's one, it's a 12-inch red maple, 12-inch QR. That was always scheduled to be removed, that was part of the plan. Now, the forester has signed off, to my knowledge, so the fore, so the only department that hasn't signed off was engineering, because engineering, therefore zoning. But the forester has signed off on the replacement plan as, as satisfying their needs.
So even that, even that 25-inch, what I'm gonna call bubble tree, just above the retaining walls, but within the limits of disturbance, how's that survive?
I'm not sure which one you're talking about.
This is the one that, the bubble, that, over here.
What's closest to the turn?
Yeah, the 47.5 feet.
Yeah, yeah.
Right above that.
Yeah, I don't see, um, I can't, I just wrote over it, so I can't see where it rises. I can check that, but I know, you know, what often happens... That's a 25-inch tree. I, I can't say specifically whether it's there or not. I know that what generally happens with Tom Doty and now Stacy, the forester, is that we produce a replacement plan, and as the project evolves, either if a tree is not doing well, or it needs to be replaced, she just basically ups the replacement, and we have to provide additional replacement trees. There are ones that we start out trying to save, in terms that they, they get a little stressed, whether they're street trees or they're on site. And so the tree removal permit process is somewhat fluid, depending during the construction process. But again, Stacy wouldn't have signed off on tree removal, or she wouldn't sign off on it. I mean, 99% she signed off on it. We wouldn't get a building CO unless Stacy indicated that we met the required replacements for all the trees that have been removed, based upon that original inventory.
Did you show them the landscaping plan on this plan?
No. And over time, actually, our replacement, we have, there was a period there when Stacy was not requiring an actual planting plan. It was just a, it was part of the verbiage that we are required to plant 532 trees, and that out of that 32, hypothetically, 24 could be evergreen and eight might have to be deciduous. So a lot of that, for a while there, we got out of, of doing actual plans. I don't know if we ever actually did a planting plan. We did a replacement schedule, and then the builder would work with Stacy to secure all permits. And if that changed over time, that number would fluctuate.
There's a number of arborvitae that are new on the property, aren't there, up on the side?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and that would be part of their replacement requirement, but you can't do all arborvitae.
Since my recollection is that that lot was really wood for forever.
Yeah, I guess, I was, I was born in 59, so it might, it might go back to 59. So that does seem like forever, I'm not sure.
Yeah, there was no house there before, it was just wood.
It's not, well, I guess we're not talking, we're not specific Northwest old growth, but yeah, probably would.
And you don't have a photo of one with, like, prior to?
I do, I, I may in my files, but I didn't look for one for today.
I just had a question, uh, to follow up on your question. The Google Images does show prior year, so you can see how it looked. But my question was, this was the plan, I think this was proposed, then there was what was built, which we understand might have gone a little different than the plan. Do we have a final plan to know the measurements?
This is, this is the final one. So what I did is, is...
The size is the dimensions, the everything is there.
Yeah, I, because I didn't wanna find that we had mis-measured something, or we're vague. So we did an as-built, and, and so these wall heights and everything are there based upon the as-built survey. So I don't wanna find out we decided to be five and a half and it turns to be six feet. So that's why this is sort of a hybrid. Client drew outside the lines, we said, let's just as-built it, so there's no confusion about what we're asking relief for, and let's show that. And that's what the, if this board were to grant the variances, that is the document that the engineering department will need to sign off on a CO. They need a plan that reflects what's, what's actually gonna be built on the site, or in this case, has been.
Any questions from the audience? I think comments from the audience? Let's back to the board. Would any board members like to give their comments? Yes, yes.
It's similar to what I studied. The last time, we, we sent out an application where the applicant was asking for a forgiveness and permission, which is that this board is not an enforcement board. If an applicant or a developer does something that violates the rules, the laws of the town, it is not up to this board to render a penalty or a violation, et cetera. That's for the governmental officials, whether it's a zoning officer or a construction official, et cetera, who could write summonses that they chose to. It's not up to this board. This board needs to consider the variances that are presented, and frankly, should not take into consideration that somebody's coming in for forgiveness versus permission. However, as I think it was Joey who pointed out, because you're left with a situation where you can ask the property owner to make the building smaller to compensate for excessive steep slope disturbance, et cetera, because they're not in a position arguably to do that today, that, that can be a consideration of this board and board members in considering this application.
If I could just make a point, that was a very good recitation of the law, Mr. Simon. Because I can't tell you how many boards I go before. At times, in this similar circumstance, and the board and the attorney, they wanna penalize the applicant for doing something they weren't supposed to do. Under the law, Mr. Simon indicated, you, you're not here to penalize the applicant, you're here to assess the variance, the justifications, uh, how... You can't take into consideration bad faith, how egregious the violation is. There is a litany of case laws that they do look into that. In this case, I would argue that, based upon the testimony, this, this wasn't bad faith. This wasn't done to get something bigger, or to try to put a pool in. This was, in the process, it was something that was decided to be done, not knowing what was required. So I would ask the board to take that into consideration as well. And the fact, like Mr. Simon indicated, the house could have been made smaller, things of that nature, yes. We still were constricted by the shape of the lot under the C1 variance, the topography. We would still have those issues. And like Mr., one of the things I asked, I, I said to Mr. Keller, I said, yeah, if this house were built conforming, I guarantee we would have been here with the homeowner a year from now, in the same position, trying to flatten that yard, because they have kids, they wanna put a playset, you know, play cornhole, I play a lot of cornhole. Can't do it unless you're on a flat surface. But anyway, with that being said, I think you, you know, my client, Mr. O'Brien, when he came to me, I believe he was sincere, he was in shock, he wanted a clean application. The last thing he wanted to do was come before a board and have to go before a government authority for something that was not done right. He needed that to be clear to me. So I just asked the board to take that into consideration.
I'll go first. So because of what's a beautiful home, it's a, it's a lovely property. I am concerned, I'm mixed on this one, I'm torn. You're 750 square feet over the permitted allowance for disturbances of steep slopes, so that's, that's...
70.
Sorry, 70, right, thank you. 7.4. So that, that's, that's quite a big ask, and I know if you would come to us with this plan before it was built, we definitely would have said you need to do something about that. That's, that's, that's a big ask. The other thing I'm concerned about is, I know the neighbor isn't here, so I will assume that, that they weren't concerned enough to come here, but in fact, in the summer, maybe not, that is concerned. There's been enough time, I guess we could tell if there's been flood or drainage on their property or anybody, the neighbor, the next-door neighbor's building a very tall house, so I'm pretty sure they haven't been affected by drainage, because they are, like, drainage. What taller than those, including yours. So I'm mixed, because I feel like this keeps happening, and I would say it's up to our governmental entities to think about how to prevent this going forward, because it's the second meeting in a row that we've had these substantial forgiveness variances, and that's neither here nor there. But I will say that I'm awaiting to see what my colleagues say. It's a big ask, I don't know how to fix it, now that you're here, but I am concerned about the message that it's sending. You just build it, and then come to us after forgiveness, this must be happening. It's like, wow, how do we, how do we fix this as a, as a, as a town?
Yeah, I, I agree. I, um, it doesn't, feels frustrating, you know, had we been presented with this variance application, as it were, I think we would have said, you know, it's, it's too much and, and scale it back, and, and we might have asked for something moderate. We don't have that, what we have is what we have. I, I think it is compelling a bit that it's, it's flat, and so it is a sort of a net benefit, and it is all herbaceous surface, so it's grass. And I think that helps, because it's not exacerbating a drainage situation, which I think is a really huge concern, is my understanding, toward hills of them all over town. Yeah, I don't, I don't love it, but I also think, to Regina's point, people who we need to be going after are the builders, and so I think there needs to be a mechanism, but I don't know that this is the case to, to me that stands on. So I think I, despite being unhappy about it, I think I'm more inclined to submit it. And the fence, I don't care about the fence on top of the wall personally. It, I, I understand that that's a variance, I, it doesn't bother me, I think it is a, that's my take.
I'll jump in. I think the reason that, for, for Rich and Mr. Eslin, uh, Eslin, uh, the reason that we seem to be having difficulty with this is because we don't wanna punish anybody. Quite the opposite, we are all homeowners in this town, we feel for homeowners in this town. It's exactly what happened with the last scenario. But there are, again, as Regina pointed out, we, this is the second one that's come out for this, so that every time something like this happens, we can just say the builder did something wrong, and then we never get to question the builder, we never get to see what the plans were anticipating. There's really nothing that we can do, it seems. And we do have a responsibility to the town, to the new, the, the property owners that come in after us, so to speak. I, I, I try to find, like, the last situation, I try to find the middle ground. I, I always try to find the middle ground here. In this case, it's, we're being offered, take it or leave it. There's no, there's been no discussion as to, you know, well, we could probably bring it back at a certain point, but there's been no discussion on that. I'd be interested to see if they had a, a different kind of a plan, to see, you know, maybe remove one of those walls, or bring the level back to a certain, no. Instead of being 1,750 square feet of invasive disturbance, we could get only 1,000 over. At least that would be somewhat of a middle ground for me, and maybe serve as a warning shot, if you will, for something in the future. But again, we're not looking to punish anybody, I don't think anybody here would want to punish anybody on this, especially not a homeowner, so those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I, I think everybody's frustrated with the situation, although for Rob's comments, I mean, I don't know if we can really send warning shots, or, I, I don't know. I mean, if we can make decisions to try to persuade homeowners to make sure their contractors do things they're supposed to do, I don't know what we're committed to do. I mean, just looking at the, looking at the proposal as it is, obviously, not, I don't think any of us are happy with this. You know, I just, I don't really know, and, and I appreciate Joe's comments. I do, you know, usually we would like to see some kind of, uh, effort to reach a middle ground, although I don't really know what the middle ground is here. I mean, I think just making changes for the sake of making changes doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I, 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 you know, I mean, again, we're all unhappy with this, but I sort of think it is what it is. And, you know, hopefully the township will find some way to address this kind of issue, but that's not our issue. And I think we just, you know, I, I, I think the property as it was, has been, in fact, developed is not optimal, but, you know, but I think makes more better use of the property. I mean, the heck, if, if, if somebody, if, if that flat area had not been created in the back, the next order would be here, coming back, asking for that. Because who would buy a house like that with no flat area in the back, other than a patio? So we would be deciding anyways, but those are my thoughts.
Can I just make a sort of a comment? It's reactive to actually, Joseph, I would, Gary said. So in circumstances like this, where the applicant is not really offering, in essence, take it or leave it, as Joseph, they're not really offering any modifications to the development to potentially mitigate the adverse impact from having excessive steep slope disturbance. So you look at this plan, and you say, well, first of all, is the justification for not offering any mitigation justified under the circumstances? And, you know, I, I look at this lot without speaking out of school, and, you know, it has that, I don't know if you wanna call it a flag or a tail, on the top left-hand portion of that property. And that property is significantly sloped, as you can see from the shading on A1. And it also has trees that are, that are bubbled, in, in essence. You know, one of the things, if the board, you know, is, is inclined to, you know, consider approval of this application, is I don't think it would be beyond the board's powers, given the circumstances of this particular application, to require as a condition some form of, of conservation on that tail, so that especially if you're looking at the, the lot coverage here, and, you know, you're at 34.61%, and the maximum is 35%. Is by, you know, maybe requiring, if you were so inclined as a condition, some sort of conservation protection, no disturbance whatsoever, for that portion of the property that shouldn't be disturbed anyway, if it's mostly steep slopes and it has what look like some, you know, some mature tree growth. That, that, that may go to, and Mr. Keller was talking about, you know, what's the purpose of the steep slope ward? To prevent erosion, to make sure that, that the natural conditions of the property are maintained to the extent, extent of possible. And that may, that may go to some, some form of mitigation, given the unique particular circumstances.
It's not a bad suggestion, but what is there now? Is it, if they make it part of an easement, or there's some kind of town, something or another going there that they couldn't touch it anyways?
If I can, there, there's no restrictions on what can be done, except that it's steep and there's trees there. So there's nothing that would, um, there's no town restrictions on that.
Okay.
So it certainly is an area that, you know, we could put some form of a conservation easement in there. Obviously, we're right up against our total lot coverage anyway, so it's not like we were ever gonna put a patio up there, or, or, you know, a cricket court or something like that, you know, it was not...
I think it would probably restrict a future owner to coming back, going.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, that's, that's kind of what I was getting at when I asked in the very beginning, you know, could you put a pool on the property? Because, no, you can't now, or you can't without, you know, coming back with more variances, but who's to say that...
They may put one in that tail section.
It's gonna come, it's gonna come before us and say, well, listen, we understand that, you know, that, that the, the first level of ste, you know, of, you know, the flattened area, the graded area, you know, that it wasn't really allowed, but, you know, we weren't part of that, and we're just, you know, this nice family that bought this house, and we really want to put in a pool, or we really want like a second play area where kids can...
And we're just, you know, this nice family that bought this house and we really want to put in a pool or we really want like a second play area where kids can kick the soccer ball. Like, it, it never stops any pool that we really have.
Or, 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 you know, twenty by fifty, play cornball.
But, but, but you would also end for shoes.
So I was kind of getting at that as well, you know, but.
So no wrong suggestion in terms of adding some sort of, you know, cap on that. And also I think the area that we talked about, the water flows downwards in, in, towards the neighbor's property. And we're surely going to have that neighbor come in and ask saying, you know, something needs to be done there. There was no thought about like, you know, channeling the water back into your own or, or, you know, that was the other thing which, you know, I was thinking that, that hasn't been looked at. But that could be a disturbance again, you know, that sort of holistic plan.
It, it, a couple of things. One is, look, it happens all the time. We, everybody's got a, everybody's, somebody's higher than somebody else. The natural drainage patterns are water flows from the higher property to the lower property. It's when we exacerbate it and make huge changes and we don't mitigate against that new impervious. So here, nothing has changed. So, you know, if I was designing this property, I would never come and say, hey, these, these, these guys created a problem here. I know that I have to accept their variance and manage it. And I'm assuming that that's what those guys are doing. And if I was to try to capture water in this area and bring it around, A, my detention system's not large enough. I'd have to find a way of maybe adding tanks. And then I would be creating additional disturbance and how I get below the walls. It would be a lot of disturbance, including some steep slope disturbance, some tree removal for an existing condition which has existed for a long time. And as I said, as an engineer, we accept the fact that I have to take water. And if somebody else had overflowed, then they're going to get some water in the future. I try to always make sure it's less. And that's what, we're not, we're not adverse to impacting that section. So I, I would say we'd cause a lot more disturbance and have more tree removal if we tried to mitigate it. I think my client has already indicated that he would be comfortable with some form of conservation easement up in that area. Like I said, it's, it's unlikely that someone would put a pool that far from the house, because as soon as they put a pool that far from the house, then they want a cabana. And then they're over building coverage, FAR, lot coverage. So it's probably gonna, it, we're happy to do the conservation easement because it seems pretty unlikely this board would ever approve those kind of variances in the future. But where my client has already indicated, he would, he would certainly be willing to do that.
Well, you also have to be aware that the law could change, the, the law coverage could go up to forty percent ten years from now and then they would be able to do that. Not if we have a conservation.
I don't think so, but.
Great, that's a good suggestion.
I just want to, I just want to add just my, my thoughts, you know. I think looking at this application as if everything wasn't built, and if it was just coming before us, and I know that it's a big ask. But at the same time, it's a very large lot, it's a twenty-nine thousand square foot lot. So, you know, the size is relatively small. And I do think that the applicant has met the, the criteria, you know, for granting, you know, C1 and C2 variances. So I think that that's important for, for, you know, things to consider as well.
I, I would just add to that, that seventeen fifty four inch that you have on the steep slope. I think you did provide justification of how that's actually additive to how the water is going to be managed and there's less soil erosion from that, you know, making it up. Just adding to that. I mean, I don't like the, the, the ten feet, you know, walls and variances. But, but there is no neighbor to complain here. So again, can't make a fully informed decision in that, so.
With regard to the ten foot walls, with, I don't know whether the rest of you consider this, but I actually went to the property and looked around and I would say, uh, this is a nurse and I vote, whenever we're inclined on everything. Um, I actually think it may be a little bit of a safety thing to not have that fence puts, pushed back and then shrubs in front of it. Because if a kid got over that ten foot fence, he's going to be like injured. So that's probably the purpose of that variance. Why, why would we not allow a ten foot wall? Because it's a really tall, tall wall into a concrete area or a hard surface. So I would be in favor of taking this variance out by simply moving your fence back three feet and putting shrubs in front of that fence.
I, I would just point out, on the top of a hundred story building, a four foot railing is all that's required. So we have that four foot. So I think that, as, my client was just concerned that kids would get behind that, but look, we, we can make that work. But again, I, I think the four foot.
But just that looked, it did look really tall to me.
So does the applicant's proposal to modify that?
I'd like to get a feel for the board, because I've heard some board members say that, that doesn't bother them at all. And I've obviously heard Ms. Truitt say that that presents a problem to her. So I, we're, we're happy to work with the board.
It is a variance you're asking for and there's a reason the variance exists.
Yeah, but I, I don't know that it's about a child falling, falling ten feet as it is, but the visual impact of, of having walls that high. And so, look, we're short hills. And so, you know, it's, even though the fences, usually when it's a solid fence is when it becomes a problem. So, but I do, you know, I'm the first one to say, we live in short hills, we shouldn't have nested six foot retaining walls. But this is an open fence, it's a little different. The ordinance is a little generic. And when the fence becomes open and diaphanous that way, it's a, it's a wrought iron looking fence, I think the visual impact.
You're asking for a fourth, fourth line.
Yep. But again, I, I would certainly consent to the board's discretion and their, and their consensus on, on the fence issue. And, and certainly we, we would agree to do the conservation.
And none of us have really commented on the separation of retaining walls, which was something that happened at the last application, I think, just for forgiveness.
Yeah, except, except this time, this time we're up by three inches.
Relatively minimal, right, so that's why. And that one to me is, doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to weigh in, if not in general, about Regina's suggestion, uh, the, you know, three little companies?
I, I would like to hear one of the options about this ten foot wall. And I'm sorry, you're saying it's open, doesn't obstruct the view, but I, I just would like to see what options exist. First two, I think, I think probably that there are the steep slope variance, if you're talking about, sort of, you know, is, there was like positive, negative criteria provided regarding that. Separation walls, which is saying it's a very small, I think I could lift it that personally, yeah, subject to the votes, uh, regardless. But the, the height of the wall is something which, you know, there is any sort of options here.
So this wall around the back range is from five and a half feet up to six feet. And then we have that four foot fence which is mounted into the cap on top of the wall. So it's actually, um, the cap is drilled, um, they're put in and they're grounded in place. And they have a cover that sits over the top so you don't see the grout mark. So that's where we get the ten feet. So it's, it's five and a half to six feet, um, and then up to four foot at the highest point of these caps here. And so that's the ten foot we're talking about. So, you know, when we are talking about, you know, the, a human would see, you know, the, the height of a six foot tall person would be right about or just above that. And then you've got the wall, because it's open is why I thought it was less impactful. But if I had to, I could take that fence and move it back three feet. So in photograph number three, it would move back just beyond the landscaping. And then obviously I would probably need to replace all the caps on top of those walls because they've got the holes in them. Come back with new, new, uh, new covers and just move that back. And when it came to the stair areas, I need to come up with a kind of a complicated detail to make sure that turns in at a point where the wall is only two feet and ties into a railing, so I don't get into a problem where I go over six feet where I tie that fence into the top of these stair areas. So there's a little bit of a tricky part there.
The question is, how long is that wall that we're seeing in picture number five, the middle of the bottom, bottom lot? And how close is it to the property?
Well, as it gets, uh, the wall here, as it's closest on the right side or the, the northeast side, the back of the wall is about eight and a half feet or eight feet from the property line. Again, we sit below that, so we're carving it. The overall length of the wall from, in the, in the backyard is, um, about a hundred feet across the stairs. And then it turns and comes another thirty feet, um, let's hear it. So that's a lot of fence that we'd have to push back.
And did you say it's eight feet from the property line?
On the right side, on the, on the narrowest point, about eight feet from the property line at the back. And then obviously on the left side, we're also, uh, it's not a steep slope area, but we're about seven feet on the left side.
And all of that hundred feet is ten feet tall?
No, no, no.
It's only on the back?
Yeah, it only on the back. So, um, the, the, the walls are stepping as they go up into the back. So if you look at the photograph, you can see these wall steps. So in the front area, I've got two foot, four foot, so that's six foot, it's in the side yard, so that's fully permitted. And then as the wall step up, here's where it comes up to about, uh, almost four feet, four feet, so this becomes eight feet. This becomes ten feet, this comes up two feet, so this stays ten feet, and then that wraps around the entire backyard.
That's the left side of the property?
That's the left side of the property. So the front part is conforming, first thirty feet or so is conforming. And then I start to go eight and then ten feet, wrapping around the property, around the back and around the side is where I stay at about ten feet. And then it starts, as I get past the air conditioners, the wall starts stepping down again.
But the only thing that's not in compliance is anything that's over, that takes you over the six feet.
Over six feet.
So the sides would be.
This, this, this first side would not need to change. I would need to change it from, from, um, where in the middle of drawing number four, where you see a step up. At that point, I need to drop the fence back on the other side of those trees or maybe move those trees, something like that.
It's a shame, it's too bad. Again, it's a shame they didn't come to us.
So what would happen actually is on this point, that if you turn that fence, and this fence would probably go back very close to the property line, just to get around those trees. So this fence, at least on the left side, would probably go, um.
And why do you have a fence then on that part where it's like, where it's like two feet tall?
So at least in this part, we'll probably go back too close to the fence, come around at some point, we bring that fence in and tie it.
You might not need a fence there at all, though, if it's like two feet tall, right, at the stair, if your wall is two feet tall.
Yeah, we probably, well, that's the part that's compliant.
Right, you probably don't need a fence there, but whatever.
Right, but that's the only part that's compliant, yeah. Yep.
Actually, after Mr. Simon put in that, uh, situation with a possible conservation easement, I'm totally for that. That would give us as a board the ability, when someone comes to us with something like this, that you need to do something to rectify or, to, you know, help the town, you know.
Yep, and one thing, I, I appreciate that, and one thing.
We call mitigating the detrimental impacts of the possible rent.
Put it in planning terms. And, and I would just say one thing about the, just one last thing about the, the extent of the variance, because the, the seventeen fifty seems like a big number. But I would point out, and Craig was always good to point it out, and he would have, because I forgot to say it, is that our ordinance is agnostic as to lot size. So on a six thousand square foot lot, I get a thousand square feet. That's twelve, fourteen percent of the lot. On a twenty-nine thousand square feet, I still get one thousand square feet. On a two acre lot, I get one thousand square feet. So, you know, and that's something that this, this board has recommended the township committee change and they just haven't gotten to it yet. So, you know, my suspicion is in a year from now, we're going to be back and they're going to be like, eh, we didn't need a variance for that, because now you've got on this size lot. Because we always, when the ordinance changed, I looked and I said, I can easily do ten percent of the lot area on every approved, um, application I've had for the last year. Someone's been, it's fifteen percent of the lot area and still not need a variance. So to make it so small, we should key it to ten percent. They said, let's see what happens, it's been a long time. So just, just wanted to, just for the people who are hung up on the numbers, we do have a big lot.
But you're still over by the laws that it says today.
But, yeah. I think, I think Jessica said it once on another steep slope案子, sometimes we all, myself included, when I'm advising my clients, we look too close at the numbers. And, and, and we look at, yeah, seventeen hundred fifty square feet is actually not that large an area.
Agreed. I, I had a case recently where we're talking about traffic at an intersection and there was like ten vehicles and we were increasing it by five. And they were like, that's a fifty percent increase of, it's five cars in an hour. So, except sometimes you do look at the percentages and it, you know, when you're dealing with small numbers, uh, that does happen.
So it concerns me because it looks really, I don't know if it's, if it's in the property, but it is sort of striking, um, to have that ten foot.
I mean, I'll wait on the fence if it's okay. I, I mean, as far as the fence being with the ten foot, it's really the aesthetic that it seems to, to me at this point. And the aesthetic is only going to affect the people that are living there. We, we don't have to see a ten foot structure. As far as the safety aspect of it, I think where it is on top of the cap is probably the safest. Otherwise, it's, as you know, you're a nurse, it's a ten foot wall is a trauma, it's a trauma.
Well, the fence, the fence would still be there, it would just be moved back, right?
It would be, it'd be further back, I mean, they're going to climb on you whether it's on the front cap or not, front cap. I just think it's more of a, there's, there's space there that'll be there, that's just my.
But it's a less of a drop, but it's a less of a drop, if, because they climb over the fence, they're on the, they're on landing and they, and then they have a six foot drop, as opposed to a ten foot drop. So whatever, yes, I'm a nurse, I think about things, someone else would, but I'm like, oh, that's, that's too tall for my comfort, but.
Are there other board members who are in favor of the, getting the, the tents in the areas where they would be in areas?
So we would commit to the conservation easement as part of our application, so.
If, if someone was going to make a motion, um, and wanted to approve the conservation, um, area easement that you would suggest it, what would be the best way to, um, phrase it, the resolution?
That somebody would make a motion to approve the application with a particular condition that the area that just ironically was a marked CE or conservation easement on, on, trumped as a, as a, yes, David Copperfield notwithstanding, that that area would be, um, subject to a conservation easement and that the board would require the applicant's attorney to propose a conservation easement document for approval by the board attorney to be recorded in the SCSC records, those. And unless there's any other additional conditions.
Can we carve out the fence variance, could I ask for that to be separate? The six oh nine point sixteen, the combined fence and wall, right? Or would that not be permitted here?
Yes, so you can have, um, so with that condition of approval, you can take a vote as the steep slope disturbance as well as the variance for the wall separation, was it three point seven five versus four feet? And then we would have a separate vote for the C variance for the, the height of the combined retaining walls and fence.
I'll love to approve as eloquently as I can by counsel, second.
So is that a motion on just the first two?
This is just on the steep slope disturbance and the wall separation.
With, with the.
With the conservation easement.
Shadr Hargani?
Yes.
Shojain Peng?
Yes.
Gary Rosen?
Yes.
Regina Truitt?
Yes.
That's all?
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield?
Yes.
Jessica Black?
Yes.
You know, you'd take a vote regarding the, um, the ten foot wall proposal, up to ten feet.
The variance.
Variance.
Would someone like to make a motion on that?
How do you, how do you look?
And move to approve the variance?
As is?
As it leading into the, yeah.
Sorry.
Shadr Hargani?
Uh, no.
Shojain Peng?
No.
Gary Rosen?
It was a motion to approve the variance proposed combined fence and wall height of a ten feet.
To leave it.
And there was a, right, there was a motion, yeah.
Yes.
Regina Truitt?
No.
That's all?
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield?
Yes.
Jessica Black?
Yes.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
I, I think we also have to acknowledge that Mr. Keller took four breaths during his term, during his testimony. Usually he does two.
And actually, we always need, I always need to say a special thank you to you.
He was like, I was cramping up at one point.
I, I like when he doesn't take breaths, because once he stops, then I'm not starting back up again.
Right.
As long as I can keep going.
Is there, is there anyone, we're, because we have to, we're, we're still okay. We're waiting to do that. We're still. Is, is there anyone in the audience who has any matters that have been before in the board that they would like to bring before us? Do I, I don't, I don't, there was about one. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn? Would you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Actually, Regina, I was really, actually you said that about the six foot wall versus the ten foot wall, you really.
I'm right. I'm right. Why do we have a variance? We just can't vote.